Okay, good morning. Today is Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. We are here this morning for a briefing meeting to interview semifinalist candidates for the superintendent search. First on the agenda is Debbie Jordan, Board Chair, to introduce all Board members.
Good morning, Dr. Perry, and welcome. I apologize for the delay this morning, but thank you for sticking it out with us. My name is Debbie Jordan, and I am the Chair and also represent District 4. I would like to introduce my colleagues here. We have Ms. Mary Fisher, District 1, Ms. Giovinelli, District 2, Ms. Chris Patrica, District 3, Ms. Gwynetta Gittens, she is on by phone and will be joining us shortly. She represents District 5. We have Ms. Betsy Vaughn, who is District 6, and Ms. Kathleen Morgan, District 7. And also, we have our School Board Attorney, Ms. Kathy Dupree Bruno, up here with us, along with all of our other helpers here today. The Board is pleased to have you as one of the top candidates for the superintendency at the School District of Lee County. Also, I'd like to explain that we will be asking the same questions to each and every one of the candidates. We had two yesterday, and three of you will be today. We will go through the same process with each of you. The Board members will have, we will have a Q and A with you. During that time, as the Board members ask questions, you will have approximately three to five minutes to respond to their questions. Prior to the questions beginning, you would have a three to five minutes to introduce yourself, and then at the end of the interview, we would then, before closing, allow you to have closing remarks and the opportunity to ask questions if you so choose to. But we're going to go ahead and begin, and I thank you, so I'm turning this back over to Ms. Fisher. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Perry. So I'll begin the questioning today with, during the first year, how might you go about determining the strengths and weaknesses of our school district? And what specific steps?
Wait, I'm sorry. I apologize again. Dr. Perry, can you please do your introduction? Sorry, Ms. Fisher.
Yes, ma'am. I'll go ahead and start that. I am Jeff Perry. I'm Superintendent of Schools currently in Hamlin County. We do have a student enrollment of approximately 10,000 students. I've been a public school educator for 35 years. For the last 18 years, I have been a superintendent at the district level. I do hold two master's degrees. I've got one doctorate degree. And I began teaching social studies in Virginia. So I'm excited about the opportunity to interview here today and looking for that next challenge. As I began to review various options throughout the county, this seemed to be a good, a good situation for me and would be a nice challenge. And so just excited about the opportunity to come forward.
Great. Thank you so much. Now, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Now, I will repeat the question. During the first year, how might you go about determining the strengths and weaknesses of our school district? And please give specific steps that you would take.
I think one of the first things that I would do as I came into any district is I would begin to review the data. I think everything that we do should be a data-driven process. So we'd look at various data points throughout the district to determine where we are academically, where we are in many different situations, to determine if there are particular strengths and weaknesses. I know that the Board has done a great deal of work with some community outreach in terms of looking, so we would review that data also to see what problems exist. And as we begin to do that, we would also solicit information from the community. And as I've done in this district, we've held a series of community forums to invite individuals in to get their viewpoints. We'd also collect and solicit feedback from all various stakeholders, and that would include staff, administrators, and then also community members and students. So as we began to do that, we had begun to just analyze all of those data points to begin to determine where we are and then match that up with our long-term goals about what we hope to accomplish. And so the Board does have a strategic plan. It's got a set of objectives and things that they want to accomplish. And we've looked to see if those data points are telling us if we're headed in the right direction to accomplish those particular objectives.
Thank you very much for that answer. Okay, now I'll pass.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll pass you on to Mrs. Giovinelli, our District 2 representative.
Good morning, Dr. Perry.
Good morning.
Good to have you this morning. How would you build a good working relationship between the Board and the superintendent? Please cite examples.
I think that everything that we do, regardless if it is a marriage, if it is friendship, or if it's working with the Board, everything that we do is about building relationships. And with any relationship, that is critical, there's a couple elements critical to that relationship. And first is open and transparent communication. I think that everything that we do should be open. I think that it should be transparent, and I think that we should actively focus on communication. I think it's important that I'm an active listener, not just simply hear things, but actually understand the nature of the problem, the nature of the thing that the Board's trying to communicate to me. I think in the other piece is that there should never be any surprises. I think that every time that we come to a Board meeting, you should be fully educated on everything that's about to happen, and to make sure that when we do come to a Board meeting, we never ask you to take action on an item that has not been discussed the month before, and that you've had plenty of time to digest and to process before making that decision. So in my current situation, the thing that I do is that each week, I send out a weekly update to the Board on Friday, so the Board will get everything that happened during that week, all the initiatives, all the things that would potentially impact, anything that's on an upcoming Board meeting, and then give you an opportunity actually to call back in and ask questions and clarifying questions that you may have. In addition to that, I do send out various texts throughout the week that if we have specific situations that are dynamic that may come to you and want to make sure that you're informed of those things so that you're never caught off guard out in the community. Because I think one of the things that I would consider to be a failure on my part is that if you were approached by someone on the street and they were asked questions about something happening within the district that you had no knowledge of. So I think through the weekly updates, I think through the text messages, and then also, I think that we put together a very detailed Board packet the week before in Board meeting so that Board members would have an opportunity to look at that information and then be able to ask questions about anything coming up to ensure that you are educated and informed enough to make decisions the night of the Board meeting. So, and going back to, I think that we need to be very transparent. I think we need to be very open and always act on a policy of no surprises at Board meeting, either from the superintendent to the Board or the Board to the superintendent.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Thank you.
Good morning, Dr. Perry. Chris Patrica here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
Great. Your question is to please describe a time or a setting where inequity and implied bias came to light, and from your position, how you addressed it, and what were the individual and/or organizational outcomes?
We have about 26% of our student population is Hispanic in Moorestown. And so we found out through various data points that our students were not, they were not graduating at the same rate, they were not achieving at the same rate. And so we began to initiate a variety of programs there to adjust that. One of the first things that we did is we did hold a series of community forums, because I think oftentimes, we're pretty good about developing solutions, but we're not very good about finding out what the true problem is. And so we're very eager to start a series of actions and a series of initiatives to remedy a problem, and we've never really understood what the problem was to begin with. So through a series of community meetings and talking with parents, our Hispanic parents, we began to ask them what their particular situation was, why that some of these inequities possibly were occurring, what were some things that we were doing that held up our efforts to kind of progress. And then as we began to have some of those conversations, one of the things came very clear to us is the thing that we thought were the main issues were not really the main issues. And so as those began, as those individuals began to articulate what their particular concerns were, then it kind of helped frame our response to that. And so one of the things that we did initially with that is that we began to actually have more preschools, because the language barrier was a big problem for a lot of our students. Through brain-based learning and through some of the research, we know that there is a ton of cognitive development and also language development that happens in those early years. So we wanted to make sure that those particular children had the very best options of starting out and that they were ready for kindergarten. Because if they're not, then that would be a situation where those particular students would always be behind and would always be struggling. I think the other thing that we began to do is we identified schools with our highest populations that were struggling with our Hispanic population. And we allocated additional resources into those particular classrooms and into those particular schools. As Board, we also created initiative that one of our, one of our primary objectives were to increase or to close the achievement gap here with our Hispanic students. And so with that being a main Board objective, then everything that we do, the creation of budget, the development of staff development opportunities, everything is revolving around those plans. So with that, this is what us to go ahead and allocate some additional money as we develop the budget into those programs to help those particular students to be successful. We also had to work with our local churches and with some of our other outside organizations to make sure that we, that we gain the trust and faith of those individuals, because many of our students would not be legal residents, and they were very concerned about sharing information and coming in and working with us. And so we had to work through a variety of avenues to make sure that they did feel like they could trust us and that any information given would be held confidential and it would be used to their benefit. We also worked with a local organization called Rita, and that was recruiting Hispanics to achieve. And with that, we worked with local community college to make sure that students, after they're graduated, regardless of their legal status, were able to go to post-secondary educational opportunities. And so we worked with that particular organization. We also are a member of OLUP, which is another Hispanic advocacy group, and so we meet regularly with them to look at various options that we would have to give those students more opportunities to be successful. And then I think all of it comes down to a piece about making sure that everybody has access, because we know that as we graduate students, I would think the massive majority of those students, there was never a doubt that they were going to graduate. But there are several students that come to our schools, where it takes everything that we have to make sure that they are successful. And so during that entire 13-year process, we have to make sure that we gain or that we provide access to those students that have the opportunity to be successful.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Ms. Jordan is next.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
My question is, please share a time when a plan or a major objective did not turn out successful, and describe what you did to change that effort, and how was the situation improved?
Well, I think as, as most superintendents, we're always successful. I'm not sure if there's ever been, especially during the pandemic, everything seemed to have gone so well. There's a number of things that we have experienced, especially during the pandemic, in which we had very elaborate plans, and we had situations to come back to school there in August, following that shutdown that we had in March. And what we found out in August is that the pandemic did not go away. We still had a great deal of surging going on in our particular county and our particular part of the state. And so we had to make some changes during that, from changing to a single platform of every student being in the classroom to a dual platform of going online. And so we were able to remain open during the entire school year. So we didn't shut down a single day, but we did offer that particular dual platform where students could log on and go remotely, or they could come to class and attend in class. And so our initial plan was to have everyone come in person. We saw quickly that the amount of cases, and we were also seeing a great deal of hospitalizations at that time. And so through all that, we had changed course and give those students who were medically compromised to give our staff, who were also some that were medically compromised, we had to provide opportunities for them to engage in that remote learning process. And we did that for, for a couple months to ensure that students would have that opportunity. And then as the numbers began to dissipate a little bit and decrease, we were able to bring some students back. We also found out through that process that at first, we allowed any student without any type of documentation to go online, as long as the parents agreed to that and there was that, that particular option. However, we found out very quickly that many students, the same students who were struggling with attendance prior to the pandemic were also not enrolling online. They were not attending classes as they should. And so we had to change policy at that particular time to make sure that those students no longer had the option of attending virtually. They had to come into class. So we had to work with our attendance coaches, we had to work with our principals and staff to make sure that those students actually came into the classroom and received that direct instruction where we could have a hands-on approach with those particular students. And throughout that process, I think the thing that we discovered is that failure is almost as good as success, because you realized what you shouldn't do, and then you could make the necessary adjustments and realize that that particular option was not a very viable option for us at that time.
Great. Thank you so very much. And Ms. Gittens has joined us, so she will be asking you the next question. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Thank you.
Good morning, Dr. Perry. How are you?
I'm doing well, ma'am.
Good. Thank you for joining us. My question is, America is facing a vast teacher shortage. What strategies would you put in place to combat that crisis?
I think that across the nation, as you've stated, there is a crisis with teachers, that this is not a new thing. It is something that has been, I think, growing for many, many years. But one of the things that we did this year is we initiated a program actually last year called Grow Your Own. And what we did is that we began to identify students in our high school as juniors and seniors that we really felt would be good teachers. We encouraged those particular students to enroll in what we call our Beginning Teacher Program. So we actually have a course in our high school that would actually enable students to gain some of those skills to enter college, you know, as a teaching, with teaching as a profession in mind. So those particular students would then go through a high school program. Then they would go to a local community college for two years and gain that associate's degree. Then we would actually pay for their participation in an online program. So they would go to the Western Governor's School, and that's a university. And with that, we actually brought those particular individuals back, and they worked for us 25 hours a week. So they would work in our schools for 25 hours a week. We would pay the tuition for those particular students, and then we would match those students up with a master teacher that we really felt would be a good mentor, would be someone that could actually, you know, drive them in the best direction. And so with that, then those particular students, in exchange for that, then they would work for us for five years, at least five years. And the other part to that that we did is we selected students who had deep family roots within our community, that those individuals would be unlikely to leave, because recruiting is only one part of the effort. We spend a great deal of money, time, and, but in those first couple of years, about getting teachers in, teaching them our systems, teaching those particular students or those beginning teachers, all the protocols and procedures that we use, and a lot of times they will leave. So it's not just the recruitment part, it's also the retaining part. So that's one program that we had is beginning teachers, that we created this program to identify local students that wanted to be teachers, and then we paid for that college for them so that they could then come in, work for us, and we paid them also for that 25 hours a week as a teacher assistant, hooked up with that mentor teacher. I think the other part that we have to do in many, many areas, and I'm not sure what it would be like necessarily in Lee County, but also, we need to make sure that the necessary infrastructure is in place too for our teachers to go there. Sometimes we're seeing the, really the cost and expenses of living in particular areas, especially housing, is brutal for some of our beginning teachers, and they have trouble coming into the area and living in that area because the, the cost of living is so high with that. And so we have to make sure that, that it is an affordable place. And then we have to make sure too that there's quality of life there in that community that would attract those individuals. So we need to make sure that those individuals feel valued, that they feel respected, and that they want to remain in our district. Then the other part that we do is we have worked with the State Department in terms of gaining more an ease into the licensure process, especially in our career and technical areas, in terms of being able to take some real-life experience and Lewis some of those pedagogical classes that are sometimes listed. And so we're constantly working with the State and finding different ways that we can get individuals licensed that would be good educators. So I think through all those particular things, I think it is still going to be a challenge. And then, of course, I think the last thing that we've got to do is we've got to make sure that our competitive, our scales, pay scales are competitive with the rest of the area. Because at this point in time, individuals have options. And if we don't provide the quality of life, if we don't provide the quality of the workplace, and if we don't provide the salaries and benefits for individuals to enjoy and benefit from, then they will select someplace else.
And thank you for that. Can I just ask really quickly, though, if you have any quick data on the success of your Grow Your Own program that you just discussed?
Yes, ma'am. We're only in the second year of it right now, and so we, we, we did a pilot project with that first group. We only did 12 students, of course. Now, we're a little bit smaller than, than Lee County, of course, but we wanted to see the feasibility of this project and see if it would work. So with those particular students, we were able to employ all those students. We just did a mid-year review of that. Our teachers, who are working with these particular students, were very excited about these candidates. And we specifically chose students in some of those hard-to-fill areas, like special ed, like math, science. So we specifically sought out some of those individuals, and one was bilingual, to make sure that we were getting what we needed. So right now, with those particular students, we're on track to graduate those students this year, and then they would be entering into our classrooms. And then with the initial data that we've got, we're looking about actually increasing the budget line for that so that we can recruit more individuals to be inside of that particular program.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And your next question is going to be from Mrs. Vaughn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If there were a conflict between different, I'm sorry, community groups in the district over a particular issue, how would you resolve it? And please cite examples that you have used.
Well, surely there's not conflicts within the communities that would come up in a school district. But we've never experienced that particular thing before. People just call us all the time, telling us how great we are. But if that were to happen, I think the thing that we end up doing is that, the first thing that we try to do is that we try to understand what is the true nature of that conflict. Because sometimes, again, I go back to that beginning piece, sometimes we are so eager and we're so quick to begin developing solutions for the problem, that we never truly understand the nature of the problem, and oftentimes, we simply make it worse. So I think the very first thing that we would need to do is sit down with both groups or multiple groups, and that we would end up talking with those individuals about what it is that would be a problem, and what is the situation, and what are the true issues surrounding that particular problem. Then I think what we began to do at some point is that we get some of the key stakeholders from each of those groups, and we bring those individuals in to see if we can find a common ground, see if there's something that we can do that would have that compromise or that win-win solution that would be able to satisfy the needs of both individuals or both groups. Now, clearly, there's never going to be a situation where we have that solemn and wisdom, I think, and able to come up with a perfect solution. But I do think that with, with some initial planning and with initial solicitation of feedback on what the true nature of the problem is, sometimes we may not be as far away as we were to a solution than we really thought. And probably the, you know, maybe the best example I would have of that is that we consolidated a couple of high schools when I was in Wise County. And with that, both communities were extremely concerned and frustrated that they were losing a school in their community. And so with that, both of those communities were extremely excited, frustrated, and angry about the potential of losing their particular schools in their communities. But we were at a point that really the, the enrollment at those high schools were extremely low. It costs an enormous amount of money for people to run those particular schools, and the curriculum offerings were not as great. So as we began to have some of those conversations, we tried to listen to what those concerns were. We were involved in a number of community meetings in where we simply allowed individuals to express their concerns. Then when we truly felt like we understood the nature of the problem, then we began to address particular issues with that, and we showed them how we could save an enormous amount of money by consolidating high schools. Now, of course, that was not the answer that they wanted to hear. But the other part that we did do is we were able to increase the curriculum and the offerings that each one of their children would be able to receive. We also demonstrated that they would have some of those extracurricular opportunities that they didn't have before, that increases opportunities in band, choir, drama, some of the programs that small schools would not be able to operate, these larger schools would be able to. Then we also talked a lot about the athletics, because in those particular communities, that was something that was specific to those, those two communities, about how they could be more competitive, about how they could create that sense of pride within the new athletic program. So as we began to do some of those things, then we had a situation in which individuals at first were extremely resistant to that. And then as we began to do some of the program initiatives that came out of all these meetings, then individuals actually found that they were not losing the home, they were simply building a new school family. And, and that went a long way to making that opening of that school a very successful one.
Thank you. We're, we're happy you have such good ideas and good plans, but if you, if you come to Lee County, you're not likely to find any conflicts here. So, next is...
Well...
Never.
All the emails and all the phone calls that I got Friday were just telling me how great we were and just how much they appreciated us, so.
Okay. Next... Okay, next question is from Mrs. Morgan.
Good morning. What has been, what has been your success as a school leader in partnering with higher education and the business community? Please mention the partnerships that have developed as a result of your leadership.
It was that, I didn't hear all that, was that higher education and industries, community industries?
Higher education and the business community.
One of the things that we have done is that we have a very close working relationship with all of our higher ed programs. And one of the first things that we did, is that we knew that some of our students were graduating high school, and then when they were going into college, we realized that some of our students were not able to do some of the math and the English, and they had to take some remedial courses at their freshman level. So we began to work with the colleges to find out exactly what those deficits were, and to make sure that we ended up helping students be successful with that. Now what we did in Virginia is that we actually developed a class as a junior. You had to take those beginning or those college entrance, if the math and in language arts. And if you did not pass those as a junior, then it was mandatory as a senior that you had to take that remedial part as a senior to make sure that you were able to enter college. And what we did, is we actually gave those students that exam again first semester because we were on block schedule. And then, if those students passed that exam, then the colleges accepted that, and they would not have to take those entrance exams when they came in. We also asked them to work with us also in terms of some things that we were trying to develop students, and do some skill sets to make sure that theirs also matched what we were doing. Now, in, actually in Tennessee, we have what is called TCAT, it's the Tennessee College of Applied Technologies. So with that, it is a more of a two-year school, which students would go and learn a particular technical skill. And for us, as we began to look at this, we wanted to have a purpose-driven curriculum of that, not just have students graduate and get a degree, but to actually have a purpose and a pathway of doing something. Because 70% of the jobs that are going to be created in the community and across this nation, don't require a four-year degree. 24% of that only requires a two-year degree after high school. Only 10% of the jobs really require a four-year degree. And, I think 20 years ago, we told every student they had to go to college or their life was ruined. And then unfortunately, they went out and got some of these worthless degrees, amassed $150,000 in student debt, and now they're sitting back living in our basement. And so, we actually worked very hard with TCAT to make sure that those students who had that pre-deposition to be, working with their hands to do the welding, to do the auto body, to do the painting, to do the engineering, whatever it would be, is that we ended up partnering with those particulars, the TCAT, to give students dual credit in high school. And so many of our students could leave with the ability to enter into college, at TCAT level, with that first year almost completely done. And we also do that too with higher ed, that we, students could, with their dual enrollment classes, with their AP classes, we were able to have many of our students go in into their sophomore year of college. I think that's a pretty common thing that individuals do anymore, but our students would have the opportunity to enter college with that first year already completed. And then I think with industry, well I think we have one of the strongest business partnerships, I think, in Tennessee. A lot of individuals do not realize this, but in small town in Moorestown, over 320 million people use something that is produced in Moorestown every single day. So even though we're the third smallest county in Tennessee, we have one of the largest industrial presence in the entire state and within the nation. All the Amazon labels are made there in Moorestown. Several of the colors that are used in any particular Tide bottle, Gatorade bottle, or anything that has a color in plastic, that's actually created in Moorestown. So, there's a lot of industrial strength, and so what we decided to do is that we were going to partner with our industries. And a couple of examples of what we did, we asked them what they needed. And one of the things that they said they needed is they needed some of the broader students to actually engage in an engineering kind of class, so that they would be able to handle some of the automation and some of the electric components that would go into programming some of the robotics, and some of the other automated systems within their plants. So we actually teamed up again with one of our colleges, and those particular students actually went through a program, and we paid for that program through some support from the businesses. Those students actually ended up leaving high school with those particular degrees. And then they graduated on Friday and were able to go directly into the workforce, making that 60,000-plus jobs going right out of high school. So, that was one part where we asked the communities, what do you need? Industries told us what they need, and we created a specialized program that was a dual enrollment platform that enabled students to be able to gain that particular coursework and then enter into the workforce with those certifications, with those licensures, with everything they needed to be successful. The other thing that we've done is that, right now, our businesses are really struggling for workers. And then we also saw that some of our students were actually struggling with that traditional classroom environment. So we created a program called Education Works. And in that, if students met certain requirements, those individuals were able to actually go to work half a day, and then they came back to us and they went to school for the other half of the day. And then, working with businesses, we actually had that individual work the first shift, first half of the shift, and then we had another student come in and work the other half of that shift, to give those workers a full worker. And then they were actually able to complete their classwork at the same time. And then in that, that was a win for everyone, because students were able to actually work. And then it provided them an incentive, because you had to maintain a certain grade average, had to maintain a certain attendance. So students who were struggling with attendance, students who did not see really the necessity of going to school, all of a sudden had a very tangible reason to go to school. And then it also really increased the labor supply for our local industries, which they very much appreciated. We also created a apprenticeship program...
Dr. Perry.
Students would, yes?
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask Ms. Fisher to ask the next question, because we're very concerned about time. But thank you for your very robust answer, thanks so much.
Yeah, you've got to make sure that you threw talking before people are through listening, so I'll try to be more concise with answers.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Dr. Perry, for that descriptive answer regarding the, creating the programs and work to school. As superintendent, what would be your role in the budgetary process? Please specify.
I think that our role in the budgetary process is to make sure that we create a budget around our priorities. I think that what I've always done as a superintendent is that, we meet with the board, we go on retreat, we develop what our priorities are, what our short-term goals are, what our long-term goals are. And then before we even start the budget process, we actually try to determine where we're headed, what we want to do, what programs, what initiatives, what extracurricular kind of events that we want to do, what populations do we want to target. Then when we have a good feel of the direction in which we're going, then we begin to create the budget around those particular goals. In many situations, people develop a goal based on last year's projects, and then they try to squeeze this strategic plan into those goals. And that really doesn't work that well. And so I think as superintendent, I'm sure that we have many capable individuals within our finance department and budgetary department that know the logistical pieces to that. But I believe that our job is to establish those priorities, and then to fund those priorities. So if you really want to close the achievement gap, and you want to provide more equity to students throughout the district, if you don't establish that as a priority, and then create your budget around that so that you can allocate resources to that, so that you can, so that you're unable to allocate money to specific programs or remediation, whatever it would be, then you're not going to be successful in it. So for me, I think my job is to make sure that I clearly understand what the priorities of the board would be, and that we establish those good, solid, strategic plans, with a subsection of that being what we hope to accomplish within the next six months, what we hope to accomplish within the next year, and what we want to accomplish in five years, and then work our budget around that, to make sure that those particular plans are successful.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, Mrs. Givernelli?
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you. What experience have you had in working with a community of diverse elements such as socioeconomic and educational levels, culture, race, and ethnicity? Please explain in detail.
I have worked in a couple of school districts where we've had a diverse group. Now, in Tennessee currently where we are, as I said, about 26% of our students are Hispanic. And then we also have a few other of those particular races and ethnicities in there, but mostly is Hispanic group. And so, I think regardless of the community in which you live, I think it's all about access. And I think that many educators, and I think many administrators maybe came from a situation in which there was never a doubt that they were going to go to college, but that was not my case. Actually, in my case, my mom was a single mom, she raised four different students on her own. She never graduated from high school, my father never graduated from high school, even though we did not see him most of my life. He actually left us when we were very early, no child support or anything. And so, my mom worked in an elementary cafeteria, then she worked at a little ice cream stand after that, and then, on the weekends, she worked in a hotel, checking folks in and cleaning the rooms. And so, I think the thing that I have a better appreciation of maybe than some other individuals, is that there was a doubt if I was going to graduate from high school. There was a situation in which those same kind of opportunities that students, that other students may have, I didn't have access to those particular things early in my life. And grew up in the rural mountains of the Appalachian Mountains there in southwest Virginia, in the Coal Mountain area. So with that, I gained a better understanding that a lot of people think that kids are simply going to be successful without our direct intervention. And I know in my case, that if it had not been for specific educators at specific times, I would not have been successful. And specifically, we had one teacher that actually paid for my first semester of college, and actually filled out the application for me to go to college. And with that, I gained a better appreciation that we have to look out for students who would not have access. So, currently, what we do with that is that we do try to provide that access, of making sure that everything is not equal. Because if you make things equal for everybody, then, just on its face, then things are not equitable. And so we have to make sure that all students are given equal access, opportunity, because many of our students, those particular individuals, don't have a chance unless we provide those particular chances. And so, one of the things that I would do is get with the board, also initiate with our leadership team, and then also initiate with the community, how students and how our community feel that their children are not gaining access to those opportunities. And then what we do is that we begin to develop a budget, a long-term plans, around those particular things to give those students those opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. I just wanted to mention that we're at the halfway point of interview questions, and we have 25 minutes left, so we'll move on now to Ms. Patrica.
Thank you.
And your next question is, what would you do to positively impact student achievement? Please discuss in detail successful efforts to narrow or close identified achievement gaps in your current district.
I think that we've been successful with that, and you saw from our resume that we were able to take a very poor community, and we were ranked fourth in the entire state, so out of 144 school districts, we were ranked fourth. And that's with about 60% of our kids being fairly reduced lunch. Also, when I moved to Whip County, at one point in time, we were ranked 101st in the entire state, and when I left, we were in the top 10. Now I think the thing that we do to close the achievement gap is a very simple process. I think that individuals, make it an elaborate one, but can be very simple. All you have to do is answer three questions. Is that, what do you want students to learn? And that's the curriculum. So what are those elements that we need students to learn? What are those essential skills? I think the second piece that we have to do, is that we have to determine if students have learned what we've taught. So that's with some benchmark assessments throughout the school year, so that we're performing an autopsy throughout the school year to determine what students are missing, so that we can provide surgical instruction. Not that carpet bombing instruction that we simply give out all the time by turning to the next page in the textbook, but what do students specifically need, and especially our students with, that are not gaining the same kind of progress we need that's involved in those student subgroups. So once we determine what those skills are missing, then provide that surgical instruction. And then that third question is, what are we going to do if they haven't learned what we taught? And so with that, then we come back with, again, some of that direct instruction, that surgical instruction, to end up helping those students be successful. And I will give you just a quick example of what we did, because I know we've run out of time, but we ended up in that first piece, we discovered that 70, about 72% of our teachers were using materials that were not on grade level. They were getting materials from a wide range of sources, and that's why we were not making progress, the material they were using were not robust enough. So we created a program in which we got our very best teachers to put their lesson plans with their PowerPoints and all other resources on an online depository. And then every third-grade teacher, every fourth-grade teacher, every algebra teacher could actually go onto that online depository and pick up those particular resources that were ensured to be on grade level and that would have that level of rigor, that would ensure that the curriculum was on grade level and pushing kids forward. So, I go into a lot more details and detail of that, because that is my passion, but I think we probably need to move on to some of the rest of the questions.
Thank you sir, Ms. Jordan is next.
Thank you.
Okay, so my question would be, what do you consider to be your major strengths as an administrator? What have you targeted for personal and professional improvement? Please.
I think one of the things that I have would be to improve student achievement. Anywhere that I have been, is that I've been able to increase student achievement, and we've been able to see a great amount of academic growth, including the closing of that achievement gap. I think the strengths that I would bring too, is that I have a very collaborative and collegial approach to leadership. I do solicit feedback, and I involve stakeholders in every decision that I make. And I'm not hesitant to make those difficult decisions. And I think over the last couple of years, I've developed a situation that I'm very quick to give praise to others, and I'm very quick to accept responsibility for everything that would happen. And I think it's my responsibility to shoulder a lot of those burdens of the district. So, I think that the other part that I think is critical, is to maintain that open and transparent persona, to make sure that individuals know that we're honest with them, that character, honesty, integrity are not merely words, but they are a life that you live. And I think the more individuals talk about character and... And I think the more individuals talk about character and honesty and integrity, probably the more you should be suspicious of that because their life should simply be that particular model. And so I think every day, we've got to live that. And I think that's something that I attempt to do every single day, is to work on that and to make sure that what I say is what happened is what will happen and to underpromise and to overdeliver.
Perfect. Thank you so very much. Ms. Gittens will ask you your next question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had to write my last word. That was a good one. My next question is, how would you handle decisions that are unpopular with the public but educationally necessary? And please cite actual examples.
Well, I think that this year has given us many opportunities to make unpopular decisions. That we were, again, through the pandemic, I think one of the primary pieces that we had was the issue of masks, for example. I think that's probably one of the most recent ones, is that when we started school, many of our parents didn't really feel that the masks were a necessity. But from all of the research that we looked at, from the spread of virus and the dramatic increases that we saw, we really felt like that was a critical part to keeping our staff safe and to keeping other students safe. So we did communicate with the public that we would start school with the mask mandate, that we would just not back down from that because we kind of felt it was a safety issue. And we did try to communicate to our public to make sure that we did hear their concerns. We held some community forums in which individuals could come in. Because I do think even if we're headed in one particular direction, I think we've got to understand that we serve the community, that they are our clients, they are our customers, and that we work for them. And so we have to make sure that they are given the opportunity to voice their concerns. And so we did give them that opportunity. But at the same point in time, we had to keep our staff members safe. And so we did initiate that particular policy now. With that, I think some people, they have to go on Facebook or they have to go on Twitter or they have to go on Snapchat to find out what their direction for the day is going to be. And that's not the way that I operate. We operate on science, we operate on data, we operate on what we feel is the best. And we don't let the political and social winds change our particular direction. Now, I think we are receptive to community input. I think that's critical because we've got to accept the culture and the norms of the community into our school system because if we're not, we're probably not reflecting that. But there are certain things that we have to do that's just unpopular. And it would be me shouldering that responsibility. And I don't think that the board is hesitant to take on some of that responsibility, but at the same point in time, that's my job. And that's part, anybody can do my job most of the time, but I get paid for that 10% of the time where things get very, very difficult and things get tough and somebody has to be that particular person to shoulder the burden. So we can make difficult decisions and we can stick to those difficult decisions. Doesn't mean that we can't be adaptable and flexible because I think we have to because things can change. At the same point in time, we can't just look for the political winds and just waiver in that because people lose faith in us if we do that. It's a situation where they know with just the right amount of pressure, we will cave in and then we can't ever develop credibility, we can't ever develop consistency if we do that.
Thank you.
Louie, again.
Good morning.
Some specific ideas of how you would judge your own effectiveness as a superintendent and how the board should evaluate your work?
One of the things that I've always tried to do when working with the board, I think when we develop those long-term goals, the short-term goals, if we take the time to do that, I think that's what I should be evaluated on. I think that if we are going to create the values and if we're going to incorporate the values of the board, their expectations into our goals, then that's what I should be evaluated on. And so very clearly, to work with the board and take those strategic plans that we have, operationalize those strategic plans so that you clearly know what we are wanting to do and that I know what you're wanting to do. We used to play that game when I was little, a telephone in which you would whisper into the ear of somebody a statement and then they would tell the next person and the next person. And by the time we got to the end of that, there was really not a recognizable statement of the first statement. And so make sure that the board is clear on what you want to accomplish. And we would set out at the very beginning that you want me to do this, 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 and this. We create a budget around those particular initiatives with specific outcomes in place. And then I provide a state of the district report routinely throughout the school year. This is where we are. This is the progress that we made. These are the lack of progress that we've made in certain areas. This is something that we started out doing and we really thought was a good path, but now we're reconsidering that path. What does the board think? So I think with the board creating those expectations, establishing those goals and those outcomes, and then the timeline, and then for me to accomplish those timelines so that at the end of the year, we feel good about what we've accomplished and then what we've done. I think the same thing is true of our administrative staff. I think the same thing is true of our teachers. Don't be ambiguous in what we're expecting folks to do. Be very clear, be very concise, and then give them the resources to be successful. So with the board, that's what I'd like to do, is have those goals, those expectations, those strategic plans, and then I'd be responsible in making sure that the goals and wishes of the board were implemented in an effective manner.
Great. Thank you. Here's Ms. Morgan.
Thank you.
Please describe your beliefs about student discipline and safety.
Of course, everything that we do right now is focused on student safety and discipline. I think that what we're beginning to see during this pandemic is that the social, emotional issues of students are just escalating tremendously. Actually, suicide, the suicide rate among teenagers were actually going down just a little bit for the pandemic yet. And there, now there's been a 50% increase in that. And we've seen a 50% increase in depression, that we've seen a 17% increase in aggression, that we have seen a ton of social, emotional issues that are presenting themselves in our schools. And so we have to keep our classrooms safe so that students can learn in those classrooms and that teachers can teach. At the very same time, however, we've got to make sure that inappropriate discipline probably comes from a source and we have to initiate or we have to find out what that source is. And then many times, what we have discovered with our disciplinary approaches is that it was not necessarily student-driven, but we did not create that environment for that students to be successful. Some of our students are just not going to thrive in that traditional classroom setting. And we've got to create alternative programming to do that. And we've done that in the districts I've worked in. We've created true alternate schools, alternative schools that not were just for kids who had messed up, but we try to identify those students early, get them into a program that better meets their needs so that they don't have the opportunity to mess up, but they can thrive in that particular environment. So, and we do have to have standards because our teachers cannot teach with students being disruptive and creating unsafe situations for other individuals. But at the same point in time, it's our duty to educate every child. And everybody says all children every day, but what most people actually mean, most kids, most days. And if we're actually going to adopt that philosophy of all kids, all day, every day, then that means that we've got to find some way to connect with these students through our struggle. Now, we do see, however, that we are getting a great number of students in that have just those physiological problems and neurological problems that just require a very specialized kind of treatment program. So we are working with those students. But outside of that particular area, if we can find out why a child is disruptive, oftentimes we can develop a program that would better meet the needs of that child.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fisher.
Yes, thank you.
Given the changing dynamics of public education, what do you see as the critical issues in the next five years?
You know, actually, I think that public school education is actually under attack from a variety of sources right now, from political means and financial means to a lot of different things. And so one of the things clearly that we have to do is we have to be stronger advocates of public school education. We have to make sure that we're seen in the community not as financial liability, but we're seen as an asset, that people know that what we produce, that what we do is essential to the American way of life. I think we've always been that great equalizer, but we've not done a good job about selling that particular story. We don't do a good job about articulating our message and sending that out so that people know that we add the greatest value to that community, that we give students a chance and never have a chance. I think so we've got to articulate that, develop that message and get that out. I think that we have to work more effectively with the political system to make sure that we enable public school education to be a partner at the table. I think also, we're going to experience an enormous amount of issues with getting certified teachers and especially in those hard-to-fill areas. I think we have to start immediately working to develop our own staff and our own people to take some of those positions. And then I think the other thing that we have to do is we've got to maintain a more deliberate focus on the social, emotional needs of both our students and our staff. We were not well before the pandemic. One in four of us were going to have a diagnosable mental disorder in our lifetime. 60% of us would not seek treatment for that. So in this room right here, two or three of us are going to experience a mental disorder. And so with that, we have to make sure that we are taking better care of our people so that they are healthy and that all this, the stress was enormous prior to the pandemic and it's just piled on to teachers. They're tired, they're worn out, they feel unappreciated, they feel devalued. And so we've got to make sure that we build those individuals up and that we really let them know the power they have. My point that I enjoy the most is our greatest fear. And in that particular form, it talks about that our greatest fear is that not that we are powerless, our greatest fear is that we are powerful beyond all belief. And what that actually means is, is that you think you're powerless, then you have no ability to change anything and thus you have no responsibilities. But when you begin to believe you are powerful, then you realize you have a responsibility. And that's where we have to get our teachers, our administrators, is to understand their power, that their power is just infinite, that it's beyond any kind of limits. And to build those individuals up so that every day they come to work, so they can be that change agent for our students.
Thank you so much for that answer. I could not agree more. And now at this time, I will pass you on to Mrs. Giovinelli.
What is about, what is it about the position that makes you want to change, is what makes you want to make a change at this time in your professional career? Be specific.
I think that I've always been an individual that has somewhat been an underdog coming from my background. You know, there was, there was no way I should have ever been superintendent. And actually, I'm not exactly sure I got here, how I got here, but I do fully remember every individual that helped me to get here. And so with that, I've always, I think, had a passion and desire to help students. And in this particular situation, this job would be the next challenge. It would be a much larger school system than I've ever worked with, and I know that would be a primary concern of the school board. But I think the skill sets that I've developed in terms of knowing intimately every aspect of school and what decision that we would make at a board level, how that would impact that preschool position, how that would impact that algebra classroom, I think that knowledge would enable me to help direct the board in terms of getting some policy and procedures in place that would have a positive impact. Because I think if you don't have that knowledge, then you do a lot of things, but those things may not have the desired result that you had intended. So with this, this would be a larger school district. This would be an opportunity for me to have an impact on a greater scale and to work with the school district. That does have a great deal of success, but also there's some areas that need help. And those are, I think, those are the areas where my skill sets would probably be the most effective and could be best utilized. So be excited about coming into the district to strengthen those things that are going well and then actually take on those things that we're struggling with and make sure that we have a good plan in place to be successful. So we will provide that direction. We will provide that leadership to create that vision. And then, I think most importantly, creating the vision is easy to some degree. It's making sure that you end up where you wanted to be at the end of that journey and that you're not distracted by all the various things that come along the way. And I think that my skill set would actually fit in well with what Lee County is today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Perry, we are now at the end of the interview. And at this time, we would have the, give you the opportunity to ask any questions and for your final thoughts. And I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, ma'am. I certainly have no questions. I have, I've read a great deal about the district and I've watched some of the board meetings and seen some of the things that the district is involved in right now. There's nothing there that I, I don't think that I could effectively deal with. Excited about simply the opportunity to come in this morning and interview with you. So I appreciate that opportunity. And again, I think the thing that I would bring to the table is that I have experienced in multiple states, I have had, I think, that intimate knowledge of how school division works. I think the further you get away from a classroom, I think the less that you are able to actually create effective strategy that would go in and change that. And last week, I was actually in a school subbing because of the pandemic, we had about a 59% fill rate. Year before that, I spent several days actually subbing as custodian and as a cafeteria worker. And I think that one of the things that that helps to do is to show individuals that you're willing to do whatever it takes for the district to be successful. But I think the other thing that it helps you do is it helps you to truly understand what is going on with the schools and the constant struggle that individuals have when they walk into that classroom every day. Because without that understanding, you're never truly going to understand the nature of any problem that you're dealing with. Because if you're talking about closing the achievement gap, if you're talking about equity, if you're talking about creating a more ideal environment for students and teachers to work in and to learn in, if you don't have that knowledge, you're never going to be successful. And if you don't have that passion, you're never really going to be successful because you would always have your eye out for the next place, for the next opportunity, and you're never really focused on doing the job that you were hired to do. So I do appreciate the opportunity to have interviewed this morning. I wish you the best about this process. And again, just thanks for the opportunity.
And thank you very much. We appreciate you coming to interview and look forward to communicating with you in the future. Have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will take a 25-minute break. At this time, we will take a 25-minute break. And we'll resume here at 10:15. Good morning. Today is Wednesday, January 19th, 2022, and the time is 10:20 a.m. We're reconvening the briefing meeting for the purpose of interviewing semifinalist candidate Michael Gaul in our superintendent search. And welcome, Mr. Gaul. We appreciate you taking the time to interview with us. At this time, I'll turn it over to Debbie Jordan, our board chair, for introductions.
Good morning, Mr. Gaul, and welcome.
Good morning.
My name is Debbie Jordan, and I am the chair, and I also represent District Four. I would like to introduce my colleagues. We have Ms. Mary Fisher from District One, Ms. Melissa Giovinelli from District Two, Ms. Chris Patrica from District Three, Ms. Gwyn Gittens from District Five, Ms. Betsy Vaughn from District Six, and Ms. Kathleen Morgan from District Seven. Along with my colleagues, we also have our communication team that's keeping us running today and our administrative team as well. The board is pleased to have you as one of our top candidates for the superintendency of the School District of Lee County. I'm going to explain the process to you. We have asked everyone the same questions, and we have gone through the same process with each and every one of the candidates. We have approximately an hour and a half for the Q and A. Prior to that, we would give you three to five minutes to have an opening statement. Then each board member will begin with the interviewing questions, which will have approximately, you would have approximately three to five minutes to respond per question. I will let you know when we're getting close to, well, Ms. Fisher, we'll let you know when we're getting close to the end. And at the end, you will have an opportunity to ask us any questions that you may have or share some final thoughts with us. So as we go ahead and proceed, if you would go ahead and do your opening statement, I would appreciate it. And again, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. It's so nice to actually be here. I've been in Fort Myers since yesterday morning in an effort to try and see if I could understand a little bit more about Lee County. I came down on my own dime, and having come from New Jersey, you can imagine that I'm smiling widely because the weather has been just so delightful. So good morning to you all, and thanks for making the time. Let me start with just a couple of thank yous first. Again, the chance to meet and speak with you all today. Any conversation about public education, to me, is time well spent, whether it advances my candidacy or not. I've learned a lot about Lee County in just the last couple of weeks as I've forwarded my application for this superintendency. Secondly, again, the chance to come down to Fort Meyer and Lee County has really been a pleasure. I've been embarking myself in your board meetings and your state report cards, with the last 24 hours of which I've driven across your beautiful city and county and reached 81 different school sites. And seeing each one of the campuses has really got me excited about this opportunity. I believe the potential to make this an A school district, where every student is loved, challenged, and prepared to reach their fullest potential and thrive in society, is clear to see. Finally, I want to thank you all for the detailed discussion a week and a half ago on the review of my candidacy thus far. You learn a lot when you hear about how you come across on paper after watching a six-hour board meeting. I'm going to start there and clear up a couple of items about my candidacy, my letter of intent and resume that clearly were not conveyed. First of all, I could not be prouder of my military career. I chose to not spend too much time talking about my 25 years as an Air Force officer and pilot, because you're hiring a superintendent, not an officer or a pilot. But if there's ever a board retreat and we all need to fly somewhere, I'd be happy to sit up front and get us there faster and safer. I can tell you that the leadership and change management parallels between the military and public school systems are very easy for me to see, but perhaps they're not as easy for others. I retired as a full colonel. I heard in the conversation, the internet had me as a lieutenant colonel, but I'm very proud of having made O six. In 2014, I received the highest accolades across my career in every command opportunity. My primary areas of focus were education and training, where I reached instructor/pilot in all seven aircraft that I flew. I was lauded once as the top instructor in the Air Force. I certainly know good teaching and learning when I see it. I was also a primary area focus on foreign policy. I was part of the Obama team that helped craft the drawdown from Iraq. And I was a mobility pilot and air refuser, which means that I have tons of experience in operational efficiencies and optimizations of large complex systems. What I really got from my military time was how to be accountable, and I learned how to do that first and foremost by being a fearless leader. Secondly, I would be remiss if I didn't address my time in public education and their short tenures in each one of the stops. I came to public education on this idea of continuing servant leadership. I've been a servant leader in the military, although some might think that the military is about my way or the highway. I'd always been a team builder and a collaborator, trying to bring my team to advance our goals furthest and fastest. When I came into public education, I retired out of the Pentagon on a Friday and landed in Detroit on Monday morning, eager to make a difference. I'd always sought to make a difference. I was very excited to be part of Governor Rick Snyder's state turnaround effort and stayed until he announced two years later that he'd be closing the effort as part of the larger Detroit city bankruptcy. Obviously, there are challenges in breaking out smaller systems within larger systems, and the governor felt that it was time to reincorporate the smaller state turnaround effort back into the core work of Detroit Public Schools. I couldn't be prouder of knowing that many of my systems and structures continued on in the new Detroit Public Schools Community District. I left Detroit, moved out to Oakland, California for a slightly larger system, and became chief of staff. I was hired directly by the superintendent. We had just crafted our strategic 2.0 version of his second tenure in Oakland when he announced that he would be taking the chancellorship of DC Public Schools. I was honored and humbled that he asked me to join him as his deputy and eagerly moved back to the East Coast. I'm trying to get I-95 out of me, but it just seems like no matter how hard I try, I find my way back to the East Coast. Despite his hurried departure from DC, I was asked by the mayor to stay an additional six months to compile and complete the annual budget, the first billion-dollar budget school in, school's budget in DC's history. Again, my strategic efforts in DC continued despite my decision to step aside following budget passing to allow the mayor a clean slate for a new chancellor's team. If situations permitted, I would have gladly stayed in each one of those districts for many years. But in the end, the fact that my works impacted and prevailed is what was more important to student outcomes, not my actual presence. Instability in leadership and stressed K-12, stressed K-12 systems is a national problem. I look forward to both a long and impactful tenure in Lee County. These first stops in K-12 taught me that it's more about the students than it is about me or the other adults and reaffirmed what I learned in the Air Force on service before self. Thirdly, I then left administration and went into the private side of education. I wanted to see if I could have broader impact faster across systems by helping to bring in efficiencies and stronger programming and services across a wider, wider variety of districts and settings. I recently left my current employer, Beable Education, after having submitted my application to the board. And so I saw that there was some consternation on whether or not I should be on the webpage or not on the webpage. I had a long conversation with my CEO, Saki Doldson, and we talked about the potential conflict of interest of me trying to sell product and services at the same time that I was trying to seek employment as a district administrator. I felt very strongly that when my name came across people's emails and cell phones, that they thought of me as a potential leader for their system and not whether or not they had to endure another sales pitch. All of my former supervisors in the private side are available for references upon request. I retain very strong relationships and talk to them all the time. This decision to step aside from the private sector and really highlighted for me the need to be clear, consistent, and transparent in messaging. As we start this interview, I just want to recap three takeaways in a short framework that I hope you can expect to hear from me today and hopefully see with me in partnership in future at Lee County. First of all, leadership matters. Active engagement with students, staff, and community cannot occur in a passive system. Leadership drives accountability, and accountability to a strategic plan will produce outcomes for students. In other words, executing with fidelity is often more important than the strategy itself. Students are the reason. I see this riddled through all the Lee County webpage and, and information that is shared. Without the students, there is no district. It may be a 14-year product line to go from pre-K to 12, but we have to be accountable to that. Every decision we make has to be connected to student outcomes. And communication and transparency are key. Whether talking about legislative policy or changes to the lunch menu, who and how the district communicates is critical to its success. Physical presence in schools and community, strong media messaging, student voice, cultural relevancy can all make the strategic plan come alive. It's why I drove to 81 school districts, 81 school sites yesterday. Most importantly, flipping the script. What I want you to hear from me today is I'm not your traditional candidate. I've made a career of successful decisions by challenging the status quo and making sure that I look at the equation from both sides, not just the left side where the variables are, but challenging the constant on the right-hand side of the equation. Students deserve it. They deserve us to think harder to ensure that they're ready for their future and for us to hand the reins over to them. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I'll begin the questioning today with, during the first year, how might you go about determining the strengths and weaknesses of our district? And what specific steps would you take?
Okay, that, that was Ms. Fisher, right? Thank you. It's tough to see. You're not coming up on the center screen, but I don't know if technology can help us with that, if the speaker would come up on the center screen so I could see them. But that's fine. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. My first year plan would be an extension of what I tried to do in the first 24 hours. You have to go on an active listening tour, an empathetic listening tour, and understand what the needs of the district are. All your candidates will come in with strong predispositions of what they believe the district needs, but coming in and telling people what they need in a community that they've lived in their entire life and maybe for generations is not the way to foster partnership and collaboration. So I would seek to get to all of the 80-plus school sites within the first year and be able to engage with all of, not only the subset, subsectors of the way the district aligns the three different regions, but as well as your districts as well. I think that is kind of a, a, a three-part strategy, which is, one, engaging with schools, two, engaging with community, and three, engaging with the local economy to be able to do that. I think the strategic plan that's already in place for Lee County has legs left in it. I don't think it's time to start a new strategic plan, but I think finding the way that my vision of what I've seen work in schools fits within the plan that the Lee County has already communicated is the direction they want to go would be the outcome of that, of that first, you called it year, but I really think it's more like a 100 to 120-day plan.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And now I'll turn you over to Mrs. Giovinelli, our District Two representative.
Good morning, Mr. Gaul. How would you build a good-looking relationship between the board and the superintendent? Please cite examples.
Sorry, I'm writing, just jotting down the questions so I can reference them later. And I apologize for the visual here. It's just easier to hear it that way. Thank you, Ms. Giovinelli. Is that how you pronounce your name?
Yes, thank you.
I believe in the concept that's called first team. There's a first team that I would consider a governance team, and that's the superintendent and the board. I, the superintendent works on behalf and bequest of the board, and the board, of course, on behalf and bequest of the community. But the relationship between the superintendent and the board is critical. I think the first way to do that is for us to create some level of retreats where, one, we're learning to understand each other personally so we can better understand each other professionally. We don't have to like each other personally, but we do have to find ways that we are respectful of each other, that we can operate professionally. I think it's easier if we all like each other, but I do think that, you know, difference in personalities or ideologies might put us in sometimes opposite corners. But I think the central piece to that is the strategic plan, the vision of the district to be world-class system, and the mission that every student delivers on its fullest potential becomes the centerpiece that allows us, no matter whether you're, you know, I'm from the Northeast, so whether you're a Mets fan or a Yankees fan, what it means is you really enjoy a good baseball game. So we can agree to disagree on which team we prefer more, one or the other. I can't tell if you're smiling or not. I'm hoping you're a Mets fan because that happens to be my, I'm blue and orange. But back to your question, the relationship is critical, that we spend as much time together in spaces where we can develop trust and respect for one another. The other thing that I think is critical to this relationship is, is that when I speak to the board, I speak to all of the board. So when a question comes in from one board member, the response goes to the board. And I am certainly answering the one board member's question, but there's no secrets, there's no one-off conversations. It is a governance team of which we operate as a board of education and a superintendent. You dictate policy, I execute policy. That would be the way that that relationship works. I've seen it work very well. I've worked for a governor, I've worked for a mayor, and I've worked for a school board. And I would say to you, and I've said on a national stage before, that I believe that the strongest governance model is the school board. And my peers would tell me that I'm crazy because they find it restrictive in having to manage votes and count votes all the time. But what I said very clearly is that local governance allows for the most connected decision to the problem. When you end up at mayoral or governor control, it's wonderful when you're aligned with that individual who holds that seat. But my example in Michigan is, is a wonderful failure of that, which is when the mayor, when the governor becomes a lame duck, then they suddenly don't care about education anymore. But a school board member sits in that chair for the sole purpose of representing their district and their constituents. So to wrap that up, I think we just need to spend a lot of time together centered on the strategy, the mission, and the vision, and then we're able to be able to deliver on that together.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaul, Chris Patrica here. Hello. I am, I am a Red Sox fan. And that's very relevant, but here is your question. Please describe a time or a setting where inequity and implied bias came to light, and from your position, how you addressed it, and what were the individual and/or organizational outcomes, please?
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. I won't talk, I won't say Bill Buckner in my response, but it's, it's all I have as a Mets fan, is 1986. I was old enough to be alive during 1969, but my dad says I didn't really watch the game as I was only two. Anyway, sports is always a good, a good way to connect with people. Inequity and bias, clearly by my resume, I've been in some very challenged districts. I want to focus at a very high level on an inequity of resources because I was able to actually drive a new funding formula in Washington, DC that was critical to our success. What I, what I found when I arrived in Washington, DC, was that there was a peanut butter spread solution to how resources were distributed to schools, even with a weighted student formula that did account for some high-end costs like special needs and some of the other Title I type of ways that weighted student formulas would work. What we found is that we still weren't getting the dollars where we needed them most, and we were unable to actually change the, 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 the distribution of funds on the front end. So then what we did is in fallout dollars, as the, you know, the, as the budget executes over the course of the year, as money started to fall out into a centralized pool, what we did is we developed an excellence for equity fund, which was based upon the concentration of kids, not just the number of kids. And so it became an exponential relationship. So not just are you a Title I school? It was if you had more than 50% of the children that were more than two levels behind on the state assessment, then you got a multiplier. You didn't just get more for the number of kids. It became an exponential. And so what we were able to do was then in turn find the schools with the greatest amount of need were getting the greatest amount of resources at a time that they needed them most. And so it took, as do any policy decisions, a lot of forward-end communication to all the schools to be able to break that down. And one of the things that I am proud of in my career is that I've always used data to be able to do that. Trying to just give people the argument is, is often like talking about politics, convincing one person who they should vote for or another. You won't change people's mind, but if you can put data in front of them and show them that the number of children who require pull-out services in one that the number of children who require pull-out services in one of these higher concentration schools is so much greater that it actually requires more personnel in that building. And if you have more personnel in that building, you have to pay for that. How do you pay for that if every child is just treated at the same level on the state average of funding? So that's how I handle the inequity of the resources and the distribution, and we were able to do that for our comprehensive schools in Washington, D.C., and we saw immediate turnaround that first year.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan is up next.
Thank you.
Hello again.
Hi.
Okay, so my question would be, please share a time when a plan or major objective did not turn out successfully, and describe what you did to change that effort, and how was that situation improved?
The old failure question. Thanks, that's always a good one.
Somebody had to ask it.
I'm going to go to a recurring problem that I see in school districts despite the fact that it's an annual event, which is school opening. And so when I arrived in Oakland, what I noticed is that everybody kept telling me school opening was going to be fine because school opening was always fine. And then what we saw was that school opening was fine in schools where school opening was normally fine, but school opening wasn't fine where school opening normally wasn't fine, but nobody had measured that. And so what we did is we took a look at that and then we started doing some backwards planning and creating milestones beforehand instead of just the ubiquitous countdown of three days until school starts. So we created a phased way that schools would go through their school opening plan and that there were milestones that they had to meet. So what this allowed us to do was then, in that subsequent year, the district was better informed knowing where the challenges would be. More often than not, this will come upon a building that has some type of modernization or you're expecting, you know, a new building opening, and the contractor will promise you that things are good to go. There's an accountability piece that works with the contractor, but just normal school opening, I found that my lower-performing schools were not as prepared 60 days out as my higher-performing schools. And so we were able to back that all the way up, and I'll give you just one particular example. We would not allow teachers to depart at the end of the school year until they actually had their room cleared inspection for that it was ready for next year. Where often what we had been hearing was, teachers will get to it when they get to it, let them go, it's June, or it's time to go. And what we found was that that became a limiting factor as we got ready for school the next year because people had put it off. And that's a very small example, but the more macro conversation is that we just put a phasedology metric in to determine how it is that we were preparing for the opening for school year.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
And I have suffered through trying to get ready for school in the beginning and get the bulletin boards and all that, so that was an interesting example. Thank you for that. My question is, America is facing a vast teacher shortage. What strategies would you put into place to combat that crisis?
Hi, Ms. Gittens. Nice to see you finally, although your mask is kind of hiding, but there you are. When you watch hours and hours of board meetings, you feel like you know people, and then I realize this is the first time you've all seen me, so it's kind of a little...
That's a double-edged sword, so we will just accept that, yes.
Thank you. Teacher shortage, I have suffered from teacher staffing challenges in each of the districts that I've been in, and so I bring both a high level of personal experience here and then some really strong, long-term ideas. But I think for the short term, the first piece is we have to flip the culture on how it is that we talk about teachers. Teaching is not the easiest job in America. Teaching is not, you get three or four months off and you're done every day at 3:30. I come from a family of teachers, and so I think, first of all, the way that we talk about teachers and celebrate them is akin to the way that I felt that the military flipped from going post-Vietnam where the military was terrible, and then going into post-9/11 where I couldn't walk down the street without somebody thanking me for my service. I once went to a Veterans, on Veterans Day, many of the school districts around federal bases would do a parent-teacher conference because they knew that the spouses that worked would be off. And I once went to one of my children in Fairfax, Virginia, I went to a teacher conference on Veterans Day, and the teacher said to me, "Thank you for your service." And I stopped and I said, "Thank you for yours." And she looked at me like nobody had ever thanked her once. And so I think there's, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. I think there's really quick things that communities can do that can celebrate it. Do you know, every time I go to the movies, I get a discount? Do you know the hotel that I'm sitting in right now in Fort Myers? I only paid like $120 to be here because I'm a military member. Why don't we do those types of kickbacks, excuse me, kickbacks locally for teachers? Why don't we create tax incentives for teachers who live within the district that they pay a lower property tax because of the work that they do? We do similar things for other first responders. I think teachers should start to be lumped into this group where they're celebrated for the work that they do instead of being vilified for the hours that people believe a teacher does or does not work. So that's number one. Number two, we have to commit to doubling down on growing our own. Teachers will flame out in the first five years if it's not a good career match for them. So I do believe, and I'll talk a little bit about recruiting, there is recruiting opportunity, but for teachers that are in the system, we need to create simplified pathways for them to add endorsements so we know that we're doubling down on the known performer. So if you happen to be the first or second-grade teacher of the year in a local elementary school like Allen Park, and then you happen to also be very good with kids with special needs, but you don't have an endorsement, the district ought to find a way that we're partnering with local higher ed that we can get them that endorsement at an accelerated time and at a reduced cost. Asking teachers to always put that on their own back is too much. And then what you'll get is lifelong commitment, because any time the Air Force or any system is ever invested in me, I felt more invested in them in return. And then finally, I will go back to recruitment. This is a wonderful part of the country. This is a state that has decided that teaching and learning is important despite the challenges of the pandemic, and so all politics aside, kids have been learning in Florida the entirety of COVID-19, which means that the learning loss is less here. There's still learning loss because the challenges of social distance and the sick rate that has happened is real. But we should be recruiting nationally for people to come here, which means we should be working with the Florida Department of Education to ease reciprocity. If you have a teacher's license, you ought to be able to come in here, start at full salary. If there's three classes you've got to take at night, we'll figure out how to do that. But we make it too hard for teachers to move across states, and then sometimes we make it too hard for them to move even within the state. And we can also be partnering with the local higher ed. The final thing I'll give is this idea of, again, I'll give this idea of investing early. If students are interested in careers in teaching, we ought to have scholarships or relationships with local universities that give them an opportunity to go into education as long as they come back and work for us. Very simple contract, it would be very easy for us. Many of these children are going to be able to go to school at reduced rates based upon their family background or their FAFSA application. Why not tie that to our future success?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. And now Ms. Vaughn will speak.
Good morning.
Hi, Ms. Vaughn.
If there were a conflict between different community groups in the district over a particular issue, how would you resolve it? Please cite examples that you have used.
Good morning. It's nice to meet you. My first goal is that I at least move from a zero to a one or a two on your rubric, having watched some of the challenges and how you saw my candidacy, but I thank you for your question. Conflict is unfortunately a real part of operating in the school district. I started yesterday down in Bonita Springs and drove up through the South, across the East, all the way out to Lee High Acres, and then finished my way through Cape Corals last night. I did not get to the barrier islands. My friends have told me that when I get there, you'll want to stay a little bit longer than just driving by the school site, so I'll hold that in reserve. But what I saw is that there are very specific cultures and communities in neighborhoods within this district. And so I'm going to go back to my time in Oakland where I saw very similar divides where we were almost an equal 25% representation of white, Latino, African-American, and Asian-Pacific Islander. And so what happened is there's this term that I've come up with, which I call the inequity of equity. So this idea of equity of how do we drive resources where they are needed most, then becomes, well, what about me? And because, and then there's never enough dollars to go around. So when I was in Oakland, we had a conflict like that where we had very strong programming for African-American males. It was called African-American Male Achievement, AAMA. It's nationally recognized. It was grown in Oakland, California. It's a wonderful program. It celebrates young men of color, and we've been able to infuse, they were able to infuse a lot of that programming into all the high schools in Oakland, not just the school where it started. But then what happened is there was conflict by other cultures and races within the community who felt that there wasn't an equivalent investment in their children. And so what we were able to do is actually meet and determine what were the needs of that community, and then actually allocate dollars against those needs. And so I think the answer to your question is, first of all, you have to listen empathetically. I couldn't go in there and say to them that boys, that black boys needed more than brown boys when somebody was living in a Latino community and not an African-American community, particularly as a white male. It wasn't my position to try and live somebody else's life. What he was able to bring to me was the need. He was showing slipping test scores, slipping attendance, lower college readiness, and lower college acceptance. And so what we were able to do is carve out specific dollars and take what we saw that worked in the first program for African-American males and parlay that over into a young Latinos' organization for males. Since I have left, they have now doubled that down, and there are specific programs as well for females of both black girls and Latino girls. My point on the conflict is I think you have to empathetically listen, you have to use the data and get people to focus on the data, but you have to be willing to compromise. If you come in so strong that you're right, then you're not empathetically listening. And so I think that's the first step to it.
Thank you. Appreciate your answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Gahl, what has been your success as a school leader in partnering with higher education and the business community? Please mention the partnerships that have developed as a result of your leadership.
Okay, I'm going to span two different districts for that. Hi, Ms. Morgan. Nice to meet you, by the way. First, on higher ed. I developed a very strong relationship in D.C. with American University and their School of Education. It is in the northwest part of the district, and what we were finding, I came and, you know, gave some, you know, I led some of the seminars that they were doing, talking to the students of ed about the challenges in D.C. And then I met with the dean, and we realized that our success rate for student teachers and their tenure within the district was much lower than we thought it would be, given the quality of American University's School of Education. And then what we determined is that we, that American University had a policy that said you couldn't go more than one metro stop away from American University for your internship or your student teaching or whatever was your off-campus event. And when we mapped that out in D.C., what we noticed is that put student teaching only in the highest quartile of elementary schools and middle schools because that's the affluent part of Washington, D.C. Now, there's nothing wrong with student teaching in strong schools. There's a lot that you can learn from watching good teaching and learning. But what happened then is that there was never a vacancy in those schools at the end of the year. So I would put you at Shepherd Elementary School, which was one of the higher-performing schools for student teaching, and you would say, boy, this is a delightful experience. And then I would hire you east of the Anacostia River where kids were coming in three, four years behind in the first grade. They hadn't had universal pre-K, they hadn't had kindergarten readiness standards, they didn't have the social-emotional skills ready to go, and first-year teachers were then burning out and leaving. So what we were able to do with American University is we expanded to a two-stop policy, and that only extended their students by another five or 10 minutes on the metro. So it wasn't a great risk of too much time for them, and it put them in the spine of the city where we were seeing that we actually had really high-quality schools that still had really challenging classrooms and students to deal with. And they always had turnover. And so although it never became a formal policy, what really happened was you didn't get a student teacher if you didn't have a forecast vacancy, because then it wasn't student teaching, it was really your first year of probation where you were still learning. And so then when you were hired, you had a whole year's worth of experience. So that was a wonderful example. I'll switch back to Oakland where I was the district committee chair for the relationship with Kaiser Permanente, which is the large health management corporation, particularly on the West Coast. So we were able to partner with an HMO and bring in, I'll just call them Student Wellness and Family Wellness Supports, to schools, particularly where kids were missing an inordinate amount of time due to health issues. And so we were able to supply these services onsite. I think a more commonly generated term for that is community schools, and being able to partner with that with the local health provider really accelerated our ability to go after chronic absenteeism and just improve the overall health of students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. Mr. Gahl, I really liked that response. As superintendent, what would be your role in the budgetary process? And please specify.
What was the last part, my role in the budget, and what?
Your role in the budgetary process, and please specify.
Oh, and specify. Thank you. Budget is my favorite topic. So I spoke with the Council of Great City Schools as both a district leader and then as a, on the private side, and I would always say two things. Categorically, there is not enough money in public education, period, dot. Even with all the ESER dollars that have dropped down, we are not giving school districts the amount of money that they need to be able to implement the programs that children need to be successful in life. However, there is more waste in public education than I have seen in any sector, and I'm coming from the Department of Defense where I have seen tons of waste. And I think the missing critical piece is a lack of fiscal acumen and accountability. Most school districts and states run an annual budget, of which is really only a nine- or a 10-month budget. In that 10th month, as long as nobody's going to jail, then they just start over again. In some states, in some states, there's actually not an ability to roll over money that you saved, and there also isn't necessarily a requirement to balance the budget on money that you overspent. Sometimes, I used to call this "shake a tree." If you're short of money, just go to the Medicaid fund, shake the tree, another couple of million dollars will fall out. If you're short of money, just slow down your hiring by three or four weeks, and magically a couple of hundred thousand dollars will appear. Fiscal accountability is the responsibility of the superintendent. I happen to know of a couple of different private partners who actually deliver these types of services where you can actually track your budget spend against your strategic initiatives. Nothing's more frustrating than saying this is the year that we double down on early literacy, and then when you run the numbers at the end of the year, you find out that your staffing is down 10% on the early literacy team and that your experience is down by 20%. That's not a matching of the strategy to the resource. So there's nothing more important to a district than its budget because it's how it actually delivers on all the words that they say. So matching those dollars, I think it needs to be fully transparent. I also believe that the ESER, I'm sorry, the ESA mandate after No Child Left Behind asked that districts now make transparency to school-level budgets. But when you look at them, they're so high-level, they literally say, we have 30 teachers, a teacher's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars apiece, so this is how much our school-based budget is. It has to go deeper than that. It has to allow the community to understand where you're putting your dollars so you're accountable for it. So I'll give you just a little bit more on budgets. I know I'm taking a lot of time here, but this is one of my areas that I've spent a lot, a lot of time on. A is accountability, T is transparency, and E is equitable. You have to have those three components to every piece of the budget. And so what will happen is that people will make an equitable decision and say, we need to give more dollars, you know, I'll take, you know, what was one of the schools, Tanglewood. Tanglewood needs more dollars. So you put more dollars to Tanglewood, but there's no accountability at the back end of it. What happened with that? What happened with the extra teacher that we supplied to an elementary school? Did we see targeted push-in supports? Did we see targeted pull-out supports? Were there increases in those students at risk and the end-of-the-year assessment? Yes or no? Doesn't mean that the individual was bad or the decision was bad, it just means that the information needs to close itself out in an accountable way. I have a lot to say about the budget.
Thank you very much.
It's the soup's responsibility.
Hey, you adequately described that, too. Now I'll turn you over to Mrs. Giavennelli.
Thank you. What experience have you had in working with... Thank you. What experience have you had in working with a community of diverse elements such as socioeconomic and educational levels, culture, race, and ethnicity? Please explain in detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'll reference my resume. Having been Detroit, Oakland, and Washington, DC, I'll give, I'll give a very specific example. While in Detroit, we had a family that had three or four different sets of children living with them, all related, but the mom had kind of taken over many of the kids within the family. And they, she was one of the strongest supporters of our local elementary school. Yet she had a hole in her roof. And so it was frustrating to see that there weren't systems to be able to contribute and support. So we were able to partner with the Local Habitat for Humanity and bring the school back as the workforce to repair the hole in her roof. That's a hyper-specific example. But I would say, holistically, and again, one of the reasons why I got, why I came to Fort Myers yesterday, and I wanted to spend the time here, is I'm what you would call a walk-a-mile type of leader. I learned the diversity and the challenges of a system by spending time there. I'll give another example. While in Washington, DC, I was meeting the chancellor at a local school. He had a personal driver, because his time was critical. I took mass transit, which was the metro to a bus, and I walked four blocks. And I got there, and he actually passed me on the way on the last four-block walk. And he said, he rolled down the window, and he said, would you like a ride? And I said, no, I'm learning more in these last four blocks than I ever thought possible. And what, and what did I learn? You know, I learned the tragedy of poverty, particularly generational poverty. As you come by any one enclave, there's a chance that there's drug paraphernalia, or there's other illicit activity that's happening in and around the school. You don't get that if you don't spend time in the community. I think this comes a little bit from, you know, my upbringing. My parents, you know, grew up in New York City. And my dad said to me when I was a little kid, because I was scared of the city, he said, as long as you look like you belong on the street, nobody will bother you. Even though, I clearly never belonged on the street in New York City. I grew up in a middle-income neighborhood in New Jersey. But I'm able to immerse myself in a community by spending the time and walking and communicating and listening. And, you know, I, I felt a very strong presence of Lee County in every community that I was in. There's very strong signage that this is a Lee County school. It's very clear that they're connected. And so I think this idea of just spending as much time as possible in those communities will gain you the respect and the trust of the community that you can speak on their behalf.
Thank you.
Mr. Gall, Chris Patrica here again. Your question is, what would you do to positively impact student achievement? Please discuss in detail successful efforts to narrow or close identified achievement gaps in your current district.
Great. Thank you. Student achievement, that's what it's all about, right? I think the first thing is, we need coherent and aligned programs across the district. I'm not, I haven't done all my homework yet, but having, you know, spent a lot of time with this, my favorite piece of paper, can you see that? That's the district map. It's not showing. And all the different codes on the bottom. I see that there are a ton of programs that are offered for families and students. And I understand the enrollment process and kind of the loose choice that exists. I'm just not sure that there's a clear pathway for every family to go from pre-K to 12 with the continuum of those programs. So can I find an ID diploma, can I find an ID elementary school? And does that give me an opportunity to then attend the ID diploma high school? That type of thinking. So I think alignment of a pathway is number one. Number two, I think this idea of leaning in as strongly as you can early, multi-tier systems of support really need an incredible amount of emphasis in tier one. Tier two and tier three services are critical, but I find that sometimes a weak tier one response will just overpopulate tier two and tier three students, which then overwhelms the system. So you lean in early to be able to do it. I'm not really a fan of the term assessments, and I know that there's a state bill going forward right now to kind of redefine this idea of the Florida State Assessment. And what I liked when I saw that was, it's asking for actionable feedback. So I don't call them assessments. I call them baselines for us to be able to understand where students start and how they're progressing through the system. I think this idea of exit tickets, informative assessments to inform, to inform the summative assessment is the way that you actually get there. This idea that if we just hold our breath, everything will be okay in the end, has proven that it doesn't work. And it particularly doesn't work for kids that are furthest behind. When students get to that magic of, I am one year behind, the system crumbles underneath them. Because you can't make up a year in a year. At best, you can make up what I would say is about a quarter of a year in a year. So it's a two-axis framework for me when I think about student achievement. First is time. Students that are furthest behind need more time. And second is quality. They need access to the highest-quality program and the highest-quality teaching that exists within the district. More often than not, as teachers continue to get stronger, they have a tendency to rise up in the, in the quartile of students that they are teaching. My training from the military was to run towards the sound of fire instead of away from it. And so I like trying to match and incentivize the strongest teachers into the classrooms of highest need. Because that's a way that I can both accelerate on time and on quality. I've had great success in the districts that I've been in, in really just, when I used this term earlier, which was operating with fidelity or executing with fidelity. The school district already has a curriculum of choice. I don't want to go and start all over again. What I want to do is make sure that the teams are using the resources that are supplied to them in a way that allows them to get the most out of them. Whether you bought Scholastic's book or HAH's, or HMH's book for social studies is not the difference on why kids are or are not achieving on social study standards. How it is that we teach that curriculum and give the support that teachers need is the thing that's missing there.
Thank you. I do have a question as follow-up. You said that you don't call them assessments. You call them something else. And I didn't catch what you said.
This line. Yeah.
Yeah. And let me, let me clarify that. I don't have the right to call them something different. I'm not like changing policy lines in the school district. I like to refer to assessments as baselines.
Okay.
Where did you start? In order to measure any level of improvement or get feedback of how things are going, I need to know where you start. I think, I believe, well, actually, I know that we use the term assessment in an evaluative way, but we forget the fact that we're a school district where our job is to teach. So if our job is to teach, we need it to be a feedback system that allows us to understand what was learned or not learned, so we can go back and teach it again. And, you know, in certain systems, that's called a reteach. Not just whether or not we met the objective. It's not a binary conversation. If it were a binary conversation, what we would see is, we would see student populations greatly decrease, and, you know, the champion would graduate. Our requirement is that everybody graduates. So we have to go back and continue to teach. So I find the term assessment to be evaluative. I like the idea of baselining and understanding where it is that we can improve. And as a matter of fact, it's a strategic objective for Lee County. It's continuous improvement. It's not continuous evaluation. It's how it is that we become a self-learning system.
Fantastic. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Ms. Jordan is next.
Okay, first of all, I have to tell you, I do agree with what your father stated to you. If you belong, if you look like you belong, no one will bother you. So I do appreciate that. I agree totally with that. My question to you would be, what do you consider to be your major strengths as an administrator? What have you targeted for personal or professional improvements? Please.
Thank you. That's a chance to both pat myself on the back and smack myself in the face. So thanks for the chance. I think I am most proud of my ability to build team. I don't know who you called for reference checks or how any of that has gone, but I have been very thankful for my ability to listen, to understand. As anyone, I have a lot of ideas, but I have found that most of the best ideas already exist, and they just need to be found, fostered, and fulfilled. And that my job has been to kind of pick that up out of the field and then run with it as an administrator. And so the idea of teaming goes a couple of ways for me. In both Oakland and DC, we created a workflow process on our strategic plan that broke down silos by taking what had normally been the office of responsibility and putting it on an angle, and making sure that there were informed and other members of nearby silos on the same team, cross-functional collaboration. But then they would report out as that cross-functional team. So that's an extension of the way that I built teams. Again, as a non-traditional educator, being able to find improvements in the lowest-performing schools in Detroit isn't because suddenly I, you know, stayed up all night and understood pedagogy. It was my ability to listen and understand where coaching needed to happen, where operational efficiencies needed to free up more dollars, to hire the right teachers, where for us to make the alignment between curriculum, instructional strategies, professional development, and assessments or baseline. Those are types of things that I'm able to kind of listen for. And so, in kind of a surreal way, a lot of times, I make myself a fly on the wall in my own conversation to try and see what's really happening. I, I know I talk a lot. So that's my disclaimer. And particularly in this type of setting where you're trying to get out as much information as possible. But being able to sit back and facilitate as a leader is one of the gifts that I think I've been able to bring to administration. Because there are so many smart and talented people out there that have the answer, and they just can't get it because there's no collaboration, and they have to wait for someone to retire, or that decision was made last week in the board. I like to be able to bubble that up. What is my area of improvement? I think that this culture that I bring from the military of being very direct is an area that I will continue to need to work on. I come from, you know, a life-and-depth type of decision-making. You're in the airplane, you have to decide what you have to do. There is no time for indecision. I have found that I struggle sometimes in public education with the 12-month cycle of, well, we'll try again next year. I think that you can create a 12-month cycle as a series of three, four-month cycles, or four, three-month cycles, or 12-one-month cycles. And so I'm trying to find the balance between my desire to accelerate, not change, but just deliver on the outcomes, instead of the, the idea that, you know, if I'm the fourth-grade, you know, teacher of record, and that fourth-grade class moves on to fifth grade, well, now I just get to start all over again. I like the idea of fourth-grade teacher understanding what happens to the student in fifth grade, in sixth grade, in seventh grade. That type of feedback mechanism is important. So I think I need to work on still understanding that balance. I don't seek to scare people with my passion and my intensity, but I just, you know, the piece that I didn't put in my opening statement was, is I came into public education, and my parents, my dad's first-generation-born Hungarian immigrant, you know, his great, his grandfather came back and forth on seven different boats, bringing the family. Everybody knows the classic Ellis Island story. When I was in Iraq for a year, I was able to offer my interpreter a green card, which is standard practice for those who help support the United States. And he was a young guy, married with two kids, and his wife worked as well. And he turned me down. And it like totally shocked me. And he said, it's easier for me to navigate the bombs in the marketplace at Baghdad than it is for me to move to Dearborn, Michigan, and go to a failed school system with no job and live four families in one house. And so it made me realize that what was happening in public education that allowed my dad to just work hard and have grit and resilience, and then be the first guy to graduate high school, and I was the first one in the family to graduate college, that model had changed. It wasn't there anymore. And so because it wasn't there anymore, it made me realize that the greatest risk to our country is not whether or not there's an existential crisis overseas of one military versus another. It was our inability to educate all people that live in America for the, really, workforce development. This is the future of Lee County. Now, I mean, there's other futures of Lee County, which is, I would be happy to move here. It's a beautiful part of the country. So you can continue to replace yourself. But what the school district's responsibility is, is to ensure that every student is prepared for life. And so that means that this is as critical as the things that I did when I supported and defended the Constitution. So I'm now supporting and defending the future of Lee County, or whatever, as I get the chance to do that. So my area to work on is, how do I deliver that without scaring everybody off the dais?
Well, thank you. I don't think that you've scared any of us. We're pretty strong up here. So next will be Ms. Gittens.
Yeah. I just want to take a minute to remind everyone that we're a little bit more than halfway through the questions. And we are scheduled to end at 11:35, which gives us another 20 minutes.
Thank you.
So, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
So that means read fast, right?
Ms. Gittens.
The next question is, how would you handle decisions that are unpopular with the public but educationally necessary? Please cite actual examples.
Thank you. I'm going to go faster now. I'll actually just try and go shorter instead of faster. Data, 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 data. And you have to communicate the data. The data needs to be transparent, so it's not a surprise. So if the data is available on the website or in the parent's hands through, you know, report cards or however these things are shared, then you have a centralized starting point that everybody knows. So you use the data to inform the decision. And I think you said earlier that someone from the communications department was in the audience. You have to be actively communicating that. An example that I would give is, you know, I've closed schools before. When you show folks that you are spending three times as much operationally, just on like transportation, electricity, and heating, than you should be to keep a school open, and that that's actually limiting your ability to hire a full staff, people will see the need to close the school. And so I've been able to do that. And I'm not for school closure. I do think that there are other ways for us to be able to populate the schools and use the buildings appropriately. But I just think that using data and clear and transparent communication allows you to take the emotive language out of the conversation.
Thank you very much.
Hi, hi, hi again. By the way, I am a Jersey girl. Not scared. Give us some specific ideas of how you would judge your own effectiveness as a superintendent, and how the board should evaluate your work.
Great. What exit, Ms. Pahn? I didn't hear that. Did you tell me what exit?
I'm sorry?
Exit in New Jersey, are you?
Oh, no, no. No exit. Not when I was growing up. Hunterdon County on the west side of the state, west central.
Okay. I'm Middlesex County, exit nine. But I just, I've spent significant time in New Jersey caring for my mom over the last year, so I've rerouted myself there. Effectiveness and evaluation, superintendent evaluation. First of all, that's determined by the board. You know, I'm happy to take on whatever it is the standard evaluation tool that you use. I think really, my own effectiveness is measured by the deliverable on the strategic plan and the KPIs and the metrics that are in place there. Graduation rates, student performance on end-of-year testing. Really, I would like a lot of focus on the growth that occurs. I noticed that the state report card is a B, but I also noticed that there's an awful lot of schools on the comprehensive and targeted school list, on the supports list. And I think it was 37% of the elementary schools, 30% of the middle schools, and 57% of the high schools scoring C grade. The good news is, nobody's below a C. But in order to become an A district like Lee County strives to, we're going to have to move those Cs up, and we're going to have to do that quickly. If you dig in by cohort, you will see students at risk are not closing the gap. There is still strong performance in many parts of the district, and there are lessons to learn there. I did notice that the homeless population had very strong growth, so there's some analysis to do there as well to see how we can learn those lessons in other places there. But my effectiveness is really as determined by the, by the board. I'm happy to be accountable. I've been accountable in every aspect of my career since the day I left for the Air Force Academy. So whatever you determine as my level of effectiveness, for me, I can just feel it. I can feel it when I walk into a building. I can feel it when I walk into a room. Are we a team? Are we on mission? Are we on vision? If we are, then we're succeeding. Sometimes the numbers might lag. I think we've seen that through COVID. All the reporting that I just referenced is 2019. I don't know what's happened in 2020 and 2021 in Lee County, because I can't find the data for it. But I do think that it's a, it's a general feeling. And- But I do think that it's a general feeling and, you know, I have mentor superintendents who have said to me, no confidence vote, then, you know, I'm happy to go. You know, I'm not here to prove you wrong. We're supposed to be a partner, partnership. So as long as you want me to serve, I'm happy to serve. And when you don't want me to serve anymore, then we can have that conversation.
Thank you.
Mr. Gall, please describe your beliefs about student discipline and safety.
Ah, student safety. Let me tell you that as I drove around yesterday, I could not get into a high school, no matter how hard I tried. So.
Good.
But I wasn't able to get into every parking lot of an elementary school. And so I do think it tells us a little bit about how we measure risk. I think there's a long and a short answer to this. I think the short answer is, is Lee County is doing a marvelous job of using resources appropriately to ensure that their buildings, their students, their staff, their community are safe, without a doubt. That's clear everywhere I go. There are gates, there are gate guards, there are people who are paying attention, there's signage that tells me that I'm under surveillance. I'm surprised that nobody pulled me over that after having gotten into 81 schools sites that said, watch out for this car, this guy's case in the joint. But I think the longer-term conversation is we have to develop relationships with both students and with communities that we know what's happening. And if you know what's happening, then you might not feel as obligated to have to have all the external pieces that people need to feel safe about their daily existence. When I have been an administrator before, I used to come home at night and say, the thing that keeps me up at night is an active shooter. Because I knew that if somebody really wanted to do it, all the fences that you have and all the gates that you have are not going to stop it. Now, it might mitigate it and it might have a very fast response. I saw an active police car at every campus that I was at yesterday. Obviously, that needs to happen in the state of Florida. Storm and Douglas is just a few years ago, right? We still live those experiences. And I think in the long term, what we really want to do is we want to develop relationships with students where adults know them and then we get to this place where we're starting to feel and think about what's happening with a student's life every day to understand how we can mitigate that on the front end so that we're not forced into, you know, gates and police response. So I think it's a two-part system, but I feel very strongly that Lee County has positioned itself where it needs to currently. But I also think that with the amount of resources available, we can develop relationships that would be less targeted that way. To get to discipline specifically, I think that's another area where you need to be very careful. Anytime a child gives an inappropriate behavior, it is a manifestation of another issue in that child's life. Adults need to remember that. Now, there are physical safety issues that have to be addressed. I totally agree with that. So there is a set of rules or protocols where we would draw the line, but we need to remember that when a child is crying for help, it might not be the way that my child or your child has cried for help. So we need to make sure that we have staff that are trained in de-escalation, in restorative justice, that we're making connections with kids. Because once you're one year behind or once you're labeled as the kid that's a problem, you're always that child with a problem. So somebody has to build that bridge. Holding eight and 10-year-old kids accountable for the rest of their life makes no sense at all. We understand cognitive development, we understand behavioral development, we understand that you just can't do that. So it's on the district to be able to have those programs in place, but yet provide the supports that the staff need to be able to feel safe.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fisher.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Gall, given the changing dynamics of public education, what do you see as the critical issues in the next five years?
Well, the critical issue in the next five years is going to be, can we sustain the resources that we've just tossed at everybody for COVID? So the downward trend of funding for public education was very steep prior to COVID. And districts were cutting and there were teacher strikes and we were having to reevaluate benefit plans, lots and lots of downward pressure on budgets. And then suddenly COVID hit, which was a double windfall because the government spent a lot of money and two districts didn't spend a lot of money. Buildings were closed in many states, saving lots of operational costs. So people are cash flush and cash rich right now, but they don't realize that they're actually facing a fiscal calamity if they don't rethink how it is that they deliver public education. So it's fiscal.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mrs. Giovinelli.
Thank you. What is it about the position that makes you want to change, makes you want to make a change at this time in your professional career? Please be specific.
Specific? I'm going to go a little bit back to Jersey. I had teachers who made a difference in my life and I've sought to make a difference in everyone's life that I've touched, both in the military, as an administrator, and then on the private side. I just feel that now is the time in my life. My children are all grown. I have the flexibility to do the things that I want to be able to do without impeding upon, you know, negative impacts for my family. I'm ready, but I also know that I'm not as prepared. Anytime that I thought I was prepared for a role, I found out in the first week how unprepared I was. So I come into any administration conversation interview recognizing that I have a ton to learn. I have a ton to learn about Lee County. I have a ton to learn about the strong programming that exists and the decisions that were made to date to get there and to be that active empathetic listener driving forward. But I just have come to a place in my life, ma'am, where I just am ready to go all in on making a difference. I have flexibility as a retired colonel. I have a pension that I get from the military. So for me, finding the right location with the right needs that match my skill set is why I'm taking limited conversations for superintenances. But I think now is just the time. I also would say that I was very upset in watching COVID as a leader of sales departments and seeing how much disarray existed in the school district. I saw a lot of passivity in the way districts were being managed. Everybody would throw their arms up, but loyally, it's me. And again, I'll go to the state of Florida saying, we're keeping schools open. And magically, whether you were a very blue district or a very red district in the state of Florida, everybody seemed to figure out a way once that policy was decided. So I think it's time for active leadership and I think I'm positive that that's a skill set that I bring to bear.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are at the end of the interviews and I really appreciate you being here with us. We now have, you now have an opportunity to ask any questions if you have any of us. And I will now return this back to Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. So, Mr. Gall, do you have any questions for the board at this time?
Yeah, I'd just love to understand a little bit more about the timing. It seems that you all will make a next cut decision early next week, but I'm trying to understand what happens then. Is there going to be a one-day visit, a three-day visit? What's the timing and how you all are going to play out the next level?
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to turn that back over to Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. We're tag teaming if you see that. So next week, on the 24th, we will have a workshop. We will have that discussion to bring it down to three candidates. We then will vote on that, on that Tuesday. Following that, we have, we'll be bringing you all back face in person. You're already here in person, well, not in person, but you're here. But you will come back to Fort Myers and you'll spend two days here. One with us interviewing and then the next day, we don't have all the details, they're working all the details on what takes place that next day for you all. But as it stands right now, we will have the three of you here on the same day to interview again in person.
Is that date been determined?
We're looking, it's approximately the 10th.
Okay.
Of February.
And that will, can I mention too that?
Ms. Gittens, what?
That during that time, there would be the one-on-ones with us. Is that true?
Yes. And then also between now and then, we will set up times for the three candidates to have the one-on-ones with us.
Interviews.
Interviews. So like a 20-minute, just a 20-minute time with each one of us. So you can share more about your passion or whatever you want to share with us.
More of my passions? Is anyone ready?
You can dumb wrestle.
The next question I would have is that I saw a lot of consistency in the enrollment over years. Has there been a demographer study on future growth? I just noticed, you know, all the land available on the south and the east, and I know the trends in the state of how many people are moving from the East Coast. What's the forecast growth for the district over the next 20 years?
Good question. Yes, okay. Ms. Patrica?
So we're looking at 1,300 to 1,500 new students per year. The, we do have a demographer and we actually hired him for a separate project, which was a student proximity plan for our elementary schools. But the product he brought to the table has allowed us to more accurately predict growth in various parts of the county. So as we look to build and replace portables, we're able to use that information to help guide our decision-making. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so it is continuing to grow at a pretty steady rate. You all are forecasting and planning around that.
I believe we are the fastest-growing district in the state of Florida if you look at our growth over the past decade.
I would totally agree with that based upon my driving yesterday, lots of construction and infrastructure development.
Thanks, Fisher. Any other questions? Would you like to give us a closing statement?
I would. Thank you so much for the time and I apologize for the old man syndrome here of the phone neck city here, but the technology actually worked out. I think it was as engaging an experience virtually as I've had to date. And so I appreciate everybody allowing us to quit back and forth on sports and exits and all the other things that we need to know about each other to be able to work together. I'm thankful for our time spent today. I think we've all learned a lot about each other and certainly the challenges that you are trying to address for the school district of Lee County. I started with some large and grand statements about how to lead change and deliver on mission and vision. And I want to leave you with three areas that I believe Lee County can focus on, meeting its goals moving forward and that I'm the leader best partnered for you to do that. This idea of active leadership, I talked about it earlier, but I think it goes a little bit deeper. I think all students should be known. I think their learning objectives need to be tracked individually, their pathways and potential to be their best potential selves are clear and attainable and that the system is constantly seeking to improve upon that. No self-reporting happens without accountability and acknowledgement. In my world, I say, we own it. I think access. All students have access to highest-quality programming. I saw great inconsistencies in facilities as I maneuvered the district over the last day. That doesn't mean that the instruction isn't meeting the standards, but it does mean that not all things appear to be equal for all parts of the county. The system should be navigable regardless of neighborhood. We have to walk their mile every day. Like I used to always say, when in doubt, put your child's name on the example as a test on whether or not it's meeting expectations. And then finally, this idea of agency. The comment that I made earlier about knowing good instruction. When you're teaching someone how to fly an airplane, you get a lot of head nods that they hear what you're saying, but you can see that they don't understand what you're teaching them. Agency is when the student actually becomes active in the participation. And I like to say, teaching becomes learning when the student develops agency. I think that through strong programming and social-emotional supports, every student can find and develop their own voice and then they become a positive contributor to their own educational journey. The student isn't really the product. The student is the partner in the development of the product, which is the educational outcome of the district. I don't want you to think of me as an untraditional candidate, but instead as the candidate who brings the breadth of leadership experiences to ask the hardest questions of the team and get the freshest answers for your students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate you taking the time to be with us today. Enjoy the rest of your visit in Lee County and we look forward to speaking with you soon.
All right. Bye-bye. Enjoy your day. I'll see you at the airport.
Okay. We'll meet you there.
Okay, the next schedule is going to be at 12:15 to 1:30. And that will be Michael Ramirez. Okay, so we can recess now and come back then at 10 after 12. Thank you. Good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, January 19th, and the time is 12:14 PM. We are resuming our briefing meeting for the purpose of interviewing a semifinalist candidate, Michael Ramirez. And at this time, I will welcome Mr. Ramirez. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Sounds a little far away, but yes, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will introduce Debbie Jordan, our board chair, who will do the welcome and give you your information for the interview. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ramirez, and welcome. My name is Debbie Jordan and I am the chair. I also represent District Four. Along with me today is my, our colleagues. I will begin with Ms. Fisher, who is District One, Ms. Giovinelli from District Two, Ms. Chris Patrica from District Three, Ms. Gwen Gittens from District Five, Ms. Betsy Vaughn from District Six, and Ms. Kathleen Morgan from District Seven. We also have our communication team that's here to assist us today, some of our HR department as well as our administrative assistant and of course, our great security staff. And we welcome you. The board is pleased to have you as one of the top candidates for the superintendency of the School District of Lee County. I'm going to explain to you how the process will work today. Each and every candidate had received the same questions and has gone through the same process. You will have, prior to our Q and A, which will last approximately an hour and a half, you will have the opportunity to do an opening statement, three to five minutes. Then each board member will begin the interviewing questions, which we give you a lot of time, the three to five minutes to answer each question. As we get closer to the end, Ms. Fisher will let us know that we are nearing the end or we're in the halfway mark. You will also have the opportunity at the end to ask any questions of us and give us your final thoughts. So in stating that, I would love to have you introduce yourself and then we will begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Jordan, and distinguished school board members. Good afternoon. It's actually still morning here in Denver, so a little snowy and icy, so. But I'm honored to have the opportunity to interview with you for the position of superintendent for the School District of Lee County. I know this is a very, very important decision for you and the entire Lee County community, so thank you for this opportunity to share with you today my values, my leadership experiences and accomplishments that have prepared me for this role. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the other four exceptional leaders that you've already interviewed. I'm honored to be considered with them. And as I begin, I want you to know that I'm a values-based leader. A values-based leader who believes in the power of, that relationships matter. I'm grounded in my faith and my family. And I truly understand the power of education to change lives. My story begins at home. I was born and raised by two incredible Puerto Rican parents. I was born and raised in the northernmost city in Puerto Rico, New York City. I'm a middle child and worked through the challenges of living in New York City. And at 15 years old, my family moved to South Florida in the late 1980s. My parents always valued the power of education, but like many parents, they didn't understand or recognize how to navigate the system. So many times, as long as the school wasn't called home, all was great at home. And that enabled me to coach through school, coach through my classes, actually many times in quite invisible. That is until my 11th grade year in high school. One educator, Mrs. Church, she was my 11th grade liberal arts math teacher, who would not allow me to coach and challenge me. It was her belief in me that gave me the confidence and... It was her belief in me that gave me the confidence and, and the confidence to aspire to do more and to be more. And 32 years later, I stand before you here, day one ready. My leadership has been tested in some of the most challenging times in two of the largest school districts in the country. My roles and responsibilities have progressively grown over my 26-plus years. The depth of my experiences as a teacher first, school supervision, academics, operations, finance, facilities, I already see myself not only as an education leader, but as a business leader. I'm battle tested through some of the most trying of times, COVID-19 most, most recently. Our reentry, developing safety protocols, safeguards, all while ensuring that we can maintain and keep our schools open with a balanced approach. That is the competing community interest as I work through that process. In Denver Public Schools, our district profile is very similar to Lee County. We serve 90,000 students, 200-plus schools, inclusive of our charter schools, 15,000 employees, and a $1.3 billion budget. You see, I'm driven by my personal story, which I believe is the story of many of our students and our parents. I believe every child deserves the opportunity to have a high-quality education and have a track of academic success in two states, Florida and Colorado. Whether improving graduation rates, early literacy data, or industry certifications, I champion all students advocating for increased opportunities and programs to personalize education, while both be also tackling the opportunity gap for our English language learners, students of color, exceptional student education, and our economically disadvantaged populations. And I'm grounded, grounded in John Daxwell's four L's of leadership, love, listen, lead, and learn. Love, loving despite our differences. It's not if we're going to disagree, but how do we do so when it actually happens? And I would say in love and respect, that's the only way I know. I think many tensions in the systems I've worked for.
Ms. Ramirez, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can, is there any way that you could speak up a, a little bit louder? Some are having a difficult time hearing.
Sure, should I, I can hold the phone up. Is that, does that work better?
Is that good for everyone? Go, go ahead, please, and I apologize for interrupting you.
No, 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 not at all, my apologies. And I say true, I've stayed true in working in those systems, really staying true to the core values and the differences. And over time, I've built trusting mutual relationships, understanding and bringing people together for a common purpose. I listen, so I love and I listen, I listen authentically with my eyes, understanding and paying attention to not only what people say, but how they say it, understanding the emotions, the passing of perspective. And I learn, I'm a learner, learning what's going great and where are the opportunities for more. Ultimately, this helps me lead. I lead with grace on the fire, collaborative and committed to living our vision, our mission, our core values, leading with passion and energy, with the just right leadership, which I hope to bring in leading Lee County schools. Hashtag love Lee schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. I'm Mary Fisher, District One and the vice chair. And I'll, I'll begin the questioning. During the first year, how might you go about determining the strengths and weaknesses of our school district? What specific steps would you take?
Sure, so first, I'd like to take a second just to congratulate Lee County Schools. Lee County is thriving throughout a pandemic. And I know this has been really difficult, but I want to take the opportunity to just recognize you, the governance team, your school, school board, district staff, and leadership. I commend you, teachers, leaders, for the work that's been happening. And as I think about how would I identify and look at the strengths in the district, first and foremost, it's about being visible. I need to be visible in the community, understanding exactly what are the strengths that are happening in the district. I would look in a number of different ways, but over the course of my time, in my entry coming into the district, I would intentionally, I would intentionally build engagement sessions with all stakeholders. I think it's important to note that all voices will be at the table as to identify what are strengths. I would want to hear from our staff, I would want to hear from school leaders, from teachers, from parents, from community leaders, and I want to hear from school staff. Intentionality around the engagement and trying to understand all the things that are going great, because there are many, many things that are, the celebrations that are going great. I commend you for the work around your strategic plan and the vision 2030 and the clear focus that's provided, the technology and ensuring and trying to address the digital divide as we've navigated the pandemic, the understanding and leaning in more to what those pieces are, and really trying to understand how to address them, as well as providing an opportunity to understand where are the opportunities. I think it's really, really important that I'm clear in my, in my vision to be visible and in the community, engaging with all stakeholder groups to understand truly what is the great that's happening in Lee County and what are the areas that we need to improve on.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll pass the questioning on to Mrs. Giovinelli, District Two.
If I, if I may before, I, do you hear feedback? Because I'm getting feedback as I talk. I don't know if that's.
Sorry, would you please repeat that? Mr. Ramirez, can you please, could you please make sure that all of your computers are, the volumes are turned down? Because you're only speaking on the phone and that will cut out some of that.
Let me see, I, I thought, I thought they were all set, but.
It sounds good.
All, all, all down.
I'm sorry, I'm getting instructions from the communication, so I apologize.
No.
Okay, if you could just lower your phone when you're speaking, then everything will go back to being okay.
Can you hear, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Could you, you had made, you had stated something just a minute ago before I had to interrupt you, so I apologize. Could you restate that so that the members can hear what you had to say? Not all of that, but whatever that last statement that you had just made.
In leading lead?
Probably was on lead.
No, he said something when, when Ms. Giovinelli.
Oh, Ms. Giovinelli, had you stated, you asked him this question already?
No, he said that he was hearing feedback on his end.
Oh, okay, you were hearing feedback. Forget what we're saying again. I apologize.
My apologies, I'm not trying to.
It's not you, it's not you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ramirez. Good to have you, Melissa Giovinelli. How would you build a good working relationship between the board and superintendent? Please cite examples.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Giovinelli. Over the span of my 26-plus years in education, I have witnessed the impact of a unified governance team as well as the challenges of a non-unified government. I believe the superintendent, I believe the superintendent is only as effective as the board allows someone how to be and that the board is only as effective as the superintendent allows them to be. And understanding the role of superintendent, it's usually for just one person, so it depends on all. So starting with this governance team and building that relationship, I believe it's very, very important that there's clear vision and alignment to what the board's goals are and we, as we partner together and support students in our community. You know, as, as a sole, as a sole employee of the board, it's my responsibility that the, it's my responsibility to ensure that the relationship between superintendent, myself and the board, governance team, is one that is open, honest, transparent, and, and the communication is grounded in what's best for our students. But I would share with working with the board, communication, communication, and communication, and when in doubt, over communicate. With the board, our board must know, you must know everything that's happening, I believe in no surprises. In my current role, I have regular interactions with our board members, whether in board meetings, workshops, presentations, closed-door sessions, written and written, weekly written communications. The expectation is that, that wicked communication happens to all board members. All board members receive the same communication. In addition to that communication, building one-on-one relations, one-on-one interaction and one-on-one meetings with board members, building, building those, building the relationships. I would envision in working with, with, in working with the board and working with you the board, I envision board retreats to really ground us, reviewing and understanding what actually, all our roles and responsibilities, but most importantly, to ensure that there's clear vision and alignment as we look through. I had the opportunity to review the, the most recent board manual and I was reading through some of the pieces around protocols for engagement. And really, my vision is really to, to work together collaboratively with our board, with you the board, working together across our community.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, is there any, Ms. Gittens is having difficulties hearing. I don't know if anyone else is having difficulties.
I was, I was having difficulty until I watched him while he was speaking. Watching him while he was speaking helped clarify the words he was saying. Sir, this is not your fault, this is the fault of aged, aged technology. You're doing great, it's, it's a problem on our end.
Would it be better if I put testicle earplugs in?
Would that be better if he, they're shaking their head yes.
Let me try, give me one sec.
Thank you.
There's, there's a lot more on here, so give me a second.
That's okay.
I can hear him, it's just garbled at times and I don't understand.
I sound a lot better in person than over the video.
I understand because I listen to a two-year-old all the time.
I listen to music.
Is that better, right, Chair?
Yes, it is to me.
Okay.
Yes.
You're fine, we're gonna, we're gonna attempt this again. Thank you so much for having so much patience.
Thank you.
Good morning slash afternoon, Mr. Ramirez, Chris Patrica here. Your question is, please describe a time or a setting where inequity and implied bias came to light and from your position, how you addressed it and what were the individual and/or organizational outcomes, please?
Wow, so. The next, so it was a, can you just repeat the question once? I want to make sure I clap to you at all.
Absolutely. Please describe a time or a setting where inequity and implied bias came to light and from your position, how you addressed it and what were the individual and/or organizational outcomes?
Sure, so, great question. When you talk about implied bias, I believe in being a, a one-trial learner, so I want to be smarter today than I was yesterday. And when we talk about implied bias, and I recognize implied bias affects decisions, behaviors, and interactions. And I would share that as a school, as apparently as a school leadership team here in Denver Public Schools, we're actually going through a book study focused on implied bias, unconscious bias, and really learning, because I, I believe that that is a journey as we work through that. I think it's really important that in, in, as you think through it, at least for me and my journey, that as things are brought to light, to not take things personal or not, not be defensive in, as you think through that. And so, and implied bias or, or what I would recognize is, when I assumed the role of a high school casualty director, I was confronted by colleagues who believed that based on my past relationships with high school principals, of the high school principals that assumed that relationship, based on that relationship, that those relationships would affect my decisions, my behaviors, and my actions. And that there was a question of whether, would I would hold leaders accountable in that context. This was hard to hear, hard to, to process as I think through, but I listened, I was self-reflective, I was, and I was self-aware, kind of thinking through, and just wanted to understand more. So, so I really, really built a relationship with that individual colleague to really understand what was, what was it and to be able to understand that, and demonstrated a commitment to try to have ongoing check-ins to assure that my behavior was regulated so that the experience in my supervision with all of my, with all of my employees. And this is a, a female leader who felt those relationships with some of the other colleagues, particularly male colleagues, were, were ones that, you know, may cause some favoritism. But I was very clear around my expectations, you know, and I asked them to hold me accountable, hold me accountable to that. The end result was, was that I believe I, I gained trust not only of, not only of that individual, but as a collective body of, of principals that I supervised. We developed even stronger relationships and I developed confidence for the, within the system as we did incredible work, incredible leadership work, while I was able to push, push leaders in their thinking around just what were the best outcomes for our students and in our work. And over the span of my time, of the seven years in that role, that incredible work led to some of the highest graduation rates ever in, in the district. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I will turn it over to Ms. Jordan.
Okay, thank you. Please share a time when a plan or a major objective did not turn out successful and describe what you did to change that effort and how was that situation improved?
I don't have any, no, I'm joking, so, there are many, there are many. I think that the transparency around, you know, being that one-trial learner and just being better each day. What I would share is, you know, during the COVID, during the pandemic, the pandemic has proved to be one of the most difficult experiences and it's taken a toll on everyone at every level of an organization, particularly in the school district within communities, in heart of students, parents, teachers, leaders, school boards, district staff. And so that emotional, physical, and mental toll over these past two years has been tough. And in March, to, in March of 2015, in Denver Public Schools, we made the decision to, to have an extended spring break, so we thought. Two weeks out, our students would be out for two weeks and these rapidly COVID rates would go down and we'd be able to get back to life as normal. At that time, that was the plan. And little did we know that we would have returned to anything normal that school year and subsequently after. And so I would share, as we began to, the planning for the 21 school year and the school year approach, COVID rates began to soar across the city. And in that, in, in that, when you know better, you do better, but looking back and understanding that we were following health data and really trying to understand and meet those needs, that we followed the advice of health officials and we pushed back the start of the school year and we began the school year remotely. I share that because while it appears to be the right decision at the time, the longer we stayed out, the harder, the harder, the, the, the challenge was, there was harder to get teachers, staff, and folks to feel comfortable and safe returning back to in-person. So we faced significant pushback with our employee groups and thinking through that. You know, the lesson learned was bringing more groups together in that decision-making process. Again, when you know better, you do better. And the commitment to, to have collaborative structures to bring people together to really understand. And so what we did was, as we started to think about when and how do we bring them back, we started with our earliest learners, understanding that our challenges at the earliest grades, our ECE K12, were cha, were significantly more challenged with remote instruction. But we developed collaborative structures around that, developed input sessions with, with various stakeholder groups, inclusive not only of teachers and school leaders, but of parents, community leaders, and students as we started to think through that. We partnered with our unions to develop an MOU to provide health and safety protocols, safeguards, and as well as cohorting guidance. The cohorting guidance was extremely challenging, as well as, well, everyone knows that, I don't know what PPE is now, but I mean, a, a term that many didn't know, but that personal protective equipment for teachers and understanding that. And the result that as that collaborative approach to that, by engaging on the, on the, engaging, allowed us to return students by the earliest, by, by the beginning of, after winter break, January of 2021. And since that time, we have been able to maintain in-person instruction, keep students in school and learning, as well as keeping staff and families and, and teachers, leaders safe in schools.
Great, thank you so very much. And I'm going to turn over to Ms. Gittens.
Yes, good afternoon. And I, I just will tell you, my son is in Denver and is 25 there and I, it's close to 70 here, so stay warm.
Oh, wow.
Yes. So anyway, my question is, America is facing a vast teacher shortage. What strategies would you put into place to combat that crisis?
Yeah, America is facing that challenge, I know. It's happening in Lee County, it's happening in Denver, it's happening everywhere. You know, we're, we're facing that teacher shortage and I would, what I would share is, not only is the teacher shortage, significant staffing challenges that, that have prohibited and really provided really difficulties in, in running the daily operations of a school. So in. So, in thinking about, like, how would I address that, the first thing is, I think it first talks to the current people that we have working in our district, right? People come to work, they want to come to a place that they love to work. And I think that having a place where people want to work, where teachers and staff want to be, and being transparent with them as far as how the decision is made, also helps to build that culture around the place of wanting to be. So, I would first look at ensuring the retention of our current teachers and those that are here, and ensuring that we have the proper support, especially for our youngest teachers. The data is clear around the first, the first, you know, for one to three years, you know, teachers make decisions around whether they're going to stay in the profession. So, those supports to maintain and keep those teachers is really important. But when we look at strategies to increase, I would look at, you know, the talent pipeline of how we're recruiting teachers, you know, everything that, you know, all districts are out recruiting at, you know, at fears where the virtue now, because we can't be in person, but doing the things that most districts do. But looking at the pipeline, that succession planning of looking at, I know we have an incredible student program to become teachers within Lee, with our higher educational institutions, but also our parent, you know, looking at our parents and our support, teachers that may inspire, support personnel that may inspire to be teachers as well, to becoming partners. So, I think it's going to be really important that we work together in establishing that, developing that pipeline, ensuring that the culture within our schools and how teachers are feeling, and how do we support our leaders and teachers to ensure that they're in the absolute best place? And lastly, I would mention, you know, really partnering with PAOF. I believe PAOF is the, is our union, the Teachers Association of Lee County, as well as PAOF, the support personnel. Really working together with both associations around how do we address this together? I don't have one single answer, but really, it's a collaborative approach to really bring folks together to try to, to try to address this, because it is a, it is a critical issue that is not only, that we're now facing in Lee County, but as you mentioned, Ms. Gittens, across, across the country.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi. Betsy Vaughn here. If there were a conflict between different community groups in the district over a particular issue, how would you resolve it? And please cite examples that you have used.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Vaughn. It seems like that's the work these days, right? And, you know, with just so many particular pieces. And as I shared in my opening, I think that it's inevitable that conflict is going to come, and it's really about how we navigate and work through that. And within the, within communities, I know Lee County is no different than the work here in Denver Public Schools. Over the last two years, we've seen, I've seen significant conflict from communities. And I think first and foremost, it speaks to trust. Trust in the community in the critical decisions in order to successfully resolve conflict. There has to be that trust. I'll reference, I'll give you homework. Stephen Covey's book, The Speed of Trust, is one of my favorite books. And it talks about that speed of trust and how the more trust that's there, the, you know, the quicker that we can make, that we can move towards some type of resolution. And when there's a lack thereof, it actually slows down the work. So, I believe that, and I believe that's built over time. So, my approach is being engaged and visible in the community. When it comes to conflict between communities, I have to lead from the front, and ensuring that everyone's at the table, being in the community, willing to, willing to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly on issues, and really trying to find and working to find common ground. During the pandemic, I faced significant, significant pushback from communities here in Denver on a number of different topics. Whether it was school closing, any decision that was made, 50% of the community was cheering the decision, and 50% of the community was taking to social media and other avenues to, to express their displeasure. So, really working together, whether it was school closing, mandates, graduation requirements, and the big question, could we actually have prom in person, right? So, just kind of working with all these different, all these different challenges. And I think it's important to note, in my community here, different regions of our city were impacted dramatically different. And it created just unique challenges that some communities experienced and others didn't. So, being visible, engaging in the community, and my strategies were intentional. We hosted town hall meetings virtually and via phone to hear different perspectives. I think it's important to, to know, all voices need to be heard, particularly those voices at times that sometimes aren't at the table. And we engaged all community stakeholder groups in trying to understand what were the challenges, how we needed to address it, whether it was providing rationale around why we were kicking schools open, the decision to go remote we faced early, we faced a lot of work to do that. We also, the other piece in engaging communities is connecting with, you know, connecting with key community leaders. You as our representative board, you know, are community leaders, but also key communities within the community that also can help provide me and our staff insight, and many times provide a trusted voice, if the voice of those that are presenting or not. So, my decisions around handling the conflict that I believe were the just right decisions that were grounded in not only in health and safety, but in putting students first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramirez, what has been your success as a school leader in partnering with higher education and the business community? Please mention the partnerships that have developed as a result of your leadership.
Sure. Thank you. I think that if every student is going to reach his or her highest potential as our mission states, it really takes, you know, the old adage, you take the village. The partnership, partnership with the Lee County business community, as well as our higher education, our higher ed institutions are an integral part in that. And what I would share is too, I would share just as a school leader, you know, at heart, I'm a teacher, and I'm a former high school principal. And so, my school, as a school leader, my experiences with the business community and partnering were the fabric of my school, where I proudly, I proudly marketed that I had over 60 business partnerships in education that directly supported the school. And I also worked with our local, at the time, community college, and it's now state college, to look at how we could increase employment opportunities for students and provide that rigor for students as well. At the district level, I've had the opportunity to do a number of things, particularly with the business community. I developed a partnership with the manufacturing community in Broward County, with an intention of focus, the manufacturing industry came and really was facing, was really facing challenges as their workforce was retiring, and they needed to attract younger employees into the manufacturing industry. So, worked to develop and provide opportunities and exposures there. Also worked with local universities, not only in Florida, but also here in Denver. The Denver Community College of Denver, working to increase, here it's called concurrent enrollment, AKA dual enrollment courses, but providing those opportunities for expansion, having a direct connect. It does help that the president of the college, the Denver Community College, is a former colleague and former high school principal from South Florida, where we established that. So, the relationships are really, really key. And with the business community, the one, the one program that I would say I'm most proud of is a program that, that I developed in collaboration with the county commissioner, county commissioner in Broward County. And it was called My Next Move. And it was, it was a program that was designed to address our students that were headed directly into the workforce after college. You know, I believe that, you know, when we think about students graduating, you know, there's options, right? Education, employment, enlistment, or entrepreneurship, right? Just thinking about how. And so, this, this particular group of students, the idea of moving into the workforce, and we partnered with local, we partnered with local universities, with local businesses, hotels, restaurants, and they actually provided and created a work, a work affair, for lack of a better word, called My Next Move. We partnered with nonprofit organizations, Hispanic Unity being one of them, and they came into schools, and they taught students effective resume writing, interviewing skills. And then we hosted this event at the convention center, where students from all of our high schools were able to come, students that their next move was employment, or maybe students that didn't know. Our local universities were there, too. Broward College was there, and a number of other universities, to be able to provide these opportunities for students. So, and that was all built on the relationship. The relationship that I have as a superintendent with the business community of Lee County and our higher ed institutions is going to be a critical and integral part of my leadership as we develop these things. The results of that next move, My Next Move event, where our students worked out, many of our students walked out with jobs, entry-level jobs with the opportunity to connect. We also had technical, our technical colleges there, our trade school there, our apprenticeship programs there, there are opportunities. And one of the things that attracts me to Lee County is, it's not a perspective of just college, it's college and all career, trade, industry, what is, what are those opportunities? And my job is to work with staff to develop those opportunities for students, and partnering with our business community and our higher education institutions will be a critical part of my, my leadership there.
Thank you so much. I'll turn you over to Ms. Fisher.
Yes. Mr. Ramirez, as superintendent, what would be your role in the budgetary process? Please specify.
Thank you for the question. Was that Ms. Fisher?
Yes. This is...
I can see the smile, so I'm just kidding. Thank you. So, my role of the budgetary process, I would say that, first and foremost, you know, the priorities of a school district can easily be identified by just looking at where we allocate money. And as a result, we've got budget process. I think it's one really, really critical that it aligns the district priorities. And so, first and foremost, aligning district priorities, starting with board goals. Our board goals are ensuring that, so my, that would be, as I work with staff, as I work with our finance department, ensuring that there is alignment around not only board goals, our district strategic plan, and really looking at what that looks like, department plans, ultimately the school plan, and also providing an opportunity for the development of some type of program evaluation. Are we getting the bang for the buck in what we're spending our monies on? You know, I think it's, and ultimately, the budget process is ensuring that, you know, revenue matches expense, and in a great day, revenue comes in higher than expense, and you know, that, that is obviously contingent upon student enrollment and a lot of other factors that come in by our state, as defined by our state legislator. Here in Denver, what I would share is, the development of the budget process, I actually held seven o'clock this morning, because I'm actually like, I'm moonlighting, I'm working and doing this today as well. So, this morning, 7:00 AM, I was able to have a call with all school leaders, and we actually kicked off our budget process this morning for the two, for the, for the 22, 23 school year. And it's a proactive, my approach is proactive and really putting in front of our leaders. I think my role is to really be clear to ensure that our, that all staff understand and we're transparent in that budgetary process around how we think about how, where we spend our dollars and how we allocate our dollars. The district process that I work collaboratively with our finance department is one that is collaborative and is transparent. We also, we have a budget advisory council that's made up of district staff, community members, and parents. And so, part of my role is to ensure that we have those systems so that that transparency and accountability around how our dollars are spent, and that there are feedback groups to give us feedback around how we're, how we're doing things and what we're doing. And those priorities are grounding principles is what we share. You know, we share all with our staff as well as with leaders. My role is to ensure that that's happening, and that, that staff know that our priorities match our budget, they're aligned to our core values, but that transparency is so, is so critical. And I'd just like to highlight, you know, the incredible work in Lee County, and I look to the, on the website very clearly, the transparency around where our budgetary dollars are, where our capital funding is, and it's really clear for our community around that. And I think the last thing I mentioned is, there's been a lot of conversation and a lot of inquiry around, you know, S of funding, and this belief that, you know, S of funding is going to solve all things. And I think that we know that, you know, it's funding for the next two or three years, and really developing those intentionality around whether it's learning supports, social, emotional, and mental health, but ensuring that those allocations are not only spent according to, to federal guidelines, but also within the best interest of our students. So, my role would be one that's proactive and working together and ensuring that we are as transparent as possible in that process.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And now, Mrs. Giavanelle will have a question for you.
Hi. What experience have you had in working within a community of diverse elements such as socioeconomic, educational levels, culture, race, and ethnicity? Please explain in detail.
Can you, can you repeat the question? I couldn't hear it that well. I apologize.
What experience have you had in working within a community of diverse elements such as socioeconomic, educational levels, culture, race, and ethnicity? Please explain in detail.
Sure. So, thank you. Thank you for that question, Ms. Giavanelle. So, so I've had the opportunity to work in two large school districts that are very diverse. My current, the current district that I work in Denver is a school district that is, 70% of our school district is students of color, and a really important piece of that, 54% of which are Hispanic, which is, so, and just working through, so I think, so my approach in working, my approach in working with them is, first and foremost, really leaning into the diversity of, of the diversity of the needs that the community has. When you talk about, you know, digging, working with the community, we have, we have taken a pretty intentional, intentional work here in Denver around just addressing, you know, academic gaps for students, particularly our, our students of color, and understanding where those gaps are. And we've been very transparent around naming where we have fallen short at the district. And so, the importance of having authentic community engagement around that is really, really, it's really, really been a core of the work in how I, how I have addressed it. Listening, listening and learning what are the needs, and being very, being very honest around where we have fallen short have been really critical pieces to that. And, you know, that engagement, I would say that engagement here in Denver has been ongoing, it's not a one-and-done, it's ongoing engagement and a commitment to engage our families around what those experiences are. We've done intentional, we've had intentionality around surveys that we, that we provide to families, particularly families of color around their experiences and how they're experiencing the district, to ensure that we're doing everything that we can. So, my approach is one that's visible and ensuring that I'm extremely approachable in that. One of the, one of the areas in Broward I was chaffed with was engaging the Hispanic community that was very disenfranchised with the district, with the experiences that the district and how they treated our students. You know, Broward County is about 34, 35%, don't call me on the data, because it's been a couple of years since I haven't been there, but 35% of their population identifies as Hispanic. And so, I developed, at the, at the request of the superintendent, I developed an intentional program or initiative that I call Mi Hente Mi Esquela. And what it was, it was an intentional effort to engage the Hispanic community, to understand their experiences, and really to open the doors of our community, to ensure and let our Hispanic community of Broward know that the doors of our schools are open, and that we need to really, really look at how we were supporting them and whatever programs and things that needed to be established. And so, those, the plans, when you think, when you ask the question around how to address it, and those, the plans, they must be developed with communities. I know what I have found in my time is, where the resistance comes, is when communities feel like things are being done at them rather than being done with them. So, our approach has been really to be at the table, have intentional, ongoing conversations, as I shared earlier, leading from the front, you know, and really just understanding what, what those needs are in order to, in order to find resolution in meeting those needs, and ultimately, so we improve outcomes for students.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica.
Thank you. Before you go, Ms. Patrica, I just want to note that we are halfway through the interview questions, and we have about 30 minutes left. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. Next question is, what would you do to positively impact student achievement? Please discuss in detail successful efforts to narrow or close identified achievement gaps in your current district.
Sure. So, I would say, I would say that the, when you talk achievement, when you talk student achievement, what's clear is that high-quality tier-one instruction is really paramount and the most important thing, along with a highly effective classroom, which is the most empowering factor for student achievement. And so, in my current district, we've done, we've had intentional work with our early literacy data. early literacy data, um, really grounded in the science of reading. We have, um, our, when you look at the academic achievement of our students, um, here in Denver, um, we've got significant gaps of students across, particularly, um, our, our students of color, underrepresented students, but all students, we're not meeting the mark. So the intentionality in what I, what I've done here in Denver is working directly with our academics department, I, what we, the academics department and school divisions here in Denver are aligned and are actually one team that directly supports student, uh, schools around that. And really pouring into ensuring that, um, how literacy is taught is grounded in research-based strategies around the science of reading and how our students learn. You know, we have readiness indicators for students coming into kindergarten and understanding, you know, where they are and, you know, um, our data shows here in Denver that, you know, we have a large pot, a, a large percentage of our population that is not in pre-aid, they're not in preschool, so they come in many times not kindergarten ready. So that approach in working specifically and intentionally, not only with school leaders, but with teachers and developing those processes. Our teachers currently here in Denver are going through, uh, a year-long modules around the science of reading to ensure that we increase and we, that, that we work to know what are the highest impact strategies in teaching reading for our youngest learners. We know what the data says about third grade reading and how critical it is, but that kindergarten, first and second grade, those experiences leading up to that is really important. And just some intention of work around not only looking at the professional development for staff and teachers and principals, but also looking at providing opportunities to visit schools, uh, look at reading blocks within classes, to identify, look for, and, and really help to support. This work is hard, and we're doing that in the midst of a pandemic, accessing, at least in Colorado, of state data. We didn't have state data, and this year we have that. We do have ongoing, um, we do have ongoing progress monitoring components, and those progress, uh, monitoring components are showing that we're making, we're, we're making gains and making increases, uh, the last increase to guidance is about a 3% growth of where students are at, but that's, there's an intentionality there. My work in Denver, that focus around early literacy has been really a key.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan is next.
Thank you. My question is, what do you consider to be your major strengths as an administrator? What have you targeted for personal or professional improvement? Please.
Thank you. Um, I would say my major strength as an administrator, as a leader, uh, I would, I would start with my, my ability to communicate. So my communication and interpersonal skills and being able to, to, to effectively communicate not only orally, uh, but written communication, as well as ongoing and developing relationships, um, is really a big key to, to my work. Um, I'm a, I'm a systems thinker, and the person accountability that I have with myself and of staff is another strength as far as, as I build systems to really ensure how we are not only have the accountability piece, but also how we have the supports around what, what that is and what that looks like. And finally, I would, I would say my third thing I would say is, um, my ability to work with diverse groups, working, working towards common ground, you know, finding common purpose and understanding as we come to, to work together, um, is a strength. And lastly, I would say resiliency. Um, resiliency because I'm, I believe I'm, I'm an administrator that's grace on the fire. I've been tested under the most, under the most extreme pressures, you know? When they talk about how steel is made, steel is made with heat and pressure, I, I faced that heat and pressure in so many pieces and so many ways, um, to really be able to come out on the other side resilient. In my three years in Denver, I, I loved my experiences here, I've worked with three superintendents in three years here as a deputy superintendent. So my resiliency and my ability to do all of the things I mentioned, build communication and interpersonal skills, the accountability piece has been really, really important. And as far as professional development, I've participated, I've participated in two superintendent academies that have really allowed me the preparation to be able to continue to grow. Uh, I'm a learner, I just most recently participated in the, uh, I just most recently, uh, participated in the superintendent's academy, uh, with the Innovation Education, uh, the Institute for Educational Innovation this past fall. Just learning, I'm a learner, I want to learn more, I don't know it all, and I want to make sure that not only am I growing myself, but I'm also building a team of folks that really know actually more than I do, uh, so that we can help together, really be able to build and lead the work.
Great, great answer. Thank you so much. And I'm turning this over to, uh, Ms. Gittens.
Thank you. And my question is, how would you handle decisions that are unpopular with the public but educationally necessary? Please cite actual examples.
Yeah, um, you know, I, um, as far as to get out of the pandemic, because, um, you know, that, that's just the, the realm of what we've been living the last three years. And I'd say, um, how, how I would handle those decisions, Ms. Gittens, is, is really, as I mentioned, we have, we have to be in front of those decisions, and we have to be able to explain the why we're making the decision. You know, understanding that sometimes they're not popular, there've been many, many decisions that have not been popular over the last, you know, two and a half plus years, but ensuring, ensuring that, um, we're grounded those decisions in what's best for students and students first is really, really, um, it's just important, it's just how I'm, it's how I'm wired, um, it's what I, what I would, um, you know, communicate. And when you talk about those competing interests that are educationally sound, we have to ground, you know, through this process, you know, the, the, the decision to keep students in school has been one where there, there's been a lot of, um, controversy. You know, in Colorado, uh, different than Denver, different than Florida, um, Colorado's a local controlled state, so local districts, and there are many, um, have the authority, to have the authority to make those, those decisions are left, uh, there. And so there are, there are positives to that, and there are challenges that come with that. So a lot of those decisions were locally controlled, so they were inconsistent in what some districts did or not. But grounding it in what was best for students, and I would say educationally sound and really looking at the data, it, it's, it's most important that we build trust with the community, that they trust that we are making those educationally sound decisions around there, and explain the why, and committing to ongoing conversation. You know, there's going to be decisions that we make that will be cheered, and there's going to be decisions that we make that probably would call for, um, many, many speakers to come to speak at the board. And really working through, what does that look like? But if we grounded in the decisions that are based on, um, what's best for students educationally, we have to build that trust with the community that as educational experts, we do know what's best, uh, for students in that, but not dismissing how parents feel, you know, parents, you know, that, you know, you know, parents, you know, communities, yeah, they're all right. I, I most recently read that the Parents Bill of Rights, I think that was passed in October, and understanding what those pieces are, we're really trying to come together and provide, um, rationale, the why, and demonstrate a commitment to have ongoing conversations, you know, as we make decisions that we believe are in the best interest of students.
Thank you. Give us some specific exam, uh, I'm sorry, give us some specific ideas of how you would judge your own effectiveness as a superintendent and how the board should evaluate your work.
Yeah. So this is what I guess to tell the board how, no, I'm joking, tell, uh, it's, uh, what I, um, so I would say two things. One is, as superintendent, as your superintendent, I would look to you, the board, to set direction, to set priorities, and to set goals. And then I would ask you to hold me accountable to what that, what those priorities and what those goals are, as we, and as, and we evaluate the achievement of those goals. Now, I judge my effectiveness, um, so the, the coaching me comes out a lot. I'm a former coach, uh, baseball is really my first love, but I'm a, I'm a, I'm a sports, avid sports fan. So the coaching me, um, I, I use the analogy of, you know, what's the score of the game? Right? And as a coach, there's three things that I ask. What are the rules? What's the score? And how much time is left on the clock? So as I think about how I would judge my effectiveness, you know, the premise around if I clearly understand what the direction and the priorities and the goals that, that, that the governance, that you, the board have set for me as your superintendent and evaluated me on those, um, making sure that those rules, that the priorities are clear and that we have clear focuses around that, um, what's the score, understanding the progress. I need to be transparent with you, the board, on my progress as I think through that. And then how much time is left on the clock? Measuring, you know, where are we? And the time in the clock dictates certain things to happen or not. If we're talking, if we're talking the second semester of our student's senior year, the strategies we incorporate to ensure that our students are making the required credits may be different than the strategy if we're talking about second grade, you know, being prepared for third grade and reading and really understanding that. But my effectiveness really is around open lines of communication with you, understanding the clear direction, the priorities and the goals, um, and, and ongoing, and, and ongoing evaluation of my effectiveness, providing that clear transparency would be my approach to, to think and do that, you know? Um, what, you know, the, as we look at the score of the game, whether it's four quarters, nine innings, or two halves, depending on your sport of preference.
Thank you. Mr. Ramirez, would you please describe your beliefs about student discipline and safety?
Um, so I believe, I believe that for, in order for learning to take place in schools, our schools must be orderly and our students and staff must feel safe each and every day. And when you talk about, when you talk about student discipline, I believe that, that student discipline must be fair and consistent and that actions have consequences. So I think that, uh, there's a piece of that, but I also feel that there's a balance, right? I think the balance around having clear expectations, ensuring that there's, there's, you know, shared, not only decision-making, but really thinking about proactive measures in place to educate students and parents as well, you know, the consequences of actions, you know, and, and if we think at a high level, I, the other piece that I think about is, you know, a commitment to, to review data. I'm a data-driven leader, so I want to review data at a high level to look at what is disciplined data, what it might say or not say. You know, I would look for, my, I would look for overrepresented students in, in particular pockets as we review discipline, as well as what supports do we have as a system to do that. The other thing I believe is, you know, I know we always go to discipline, but as a teacher and my belief as an administrator and the work I've led, is that students who are engaged and connected in school don't misbehave. And so it speaks to, it speaks to the engagement within our schools, which is directly aligned to, to our, our strategic plan as we think about the work of, you know, 2030 and really ensuring that we have rigorous curriculum and kids are engaged, and we have the rights of porch for students around that. And I've developed, uh, the school design around that. Um, from a school safety perspective, um, like, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't be me if I didn't, if I didn't share as a high school, as a former high school principal, as a, as a former personality, but the safety and security of students was always my top priority. I proactively partnered with local law enforcement to provide emergency drills. I also allow local law enforcement to use our buildings to, for tacticals, pre purposes, and all those things. You know, and as a principal supervisor who worked most closely with Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Broward, February 14, 2018 forever, forever changed my life. The devastation, the devastation of one horrific cowardly act that stole the lives of 17 students, that were sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, I can't be me if I don't tell you, like, that forever changed how I think of school safety. Um, when you know better, you do better. It's important to really ensure, to provide training, provide, to take every accusation seriously. I know there's been recent board workshops on threat assessments and how important those pieces are. The one thing I would say is upon my, you know, it's so important to me, upon my arrival in Denver, one of the first orders of business I had was I met with my chief of safety. I visited our emergency, uh, our emergency command center, I spent a day right along, understanding what we do, protocols, also ensuring that the bus stops with me around ensuring the compliance with all emergency drills around there, and providing supports. You know, as superintendent, as your superintendent, I want to ensure that our safety department has the necessary resources and support to keep our schools safe, and that we have a positive working relationship with not only Lee County Sheriff's Department, but our surrounding police department. You know, ensuring the safety of our students, that will always be my top priority.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Given the changing dynamics of public education, what do you see as the critical issues in the next five years?
Uh, yeah. Um, I'll give you a couple, there's a lot of them, but I'll give you a couple of them. I think first and foremost, you know, we have to think about as we're coming out of the pandemic, what does that recovery piece look like? You know, that's going to be a challenging, there is so much work done around that, and, um, here in Denver and very similarly across, you know, we have taken an approach around, you know, accelerating learning. It is not our students' fault that there's been, you know, this is not, we cannot develop plans that, that put this on the back of our students, and we're not going to remediate ourselves out of these plans. So I think it's really important, it's a mindset around ensuring that we have an acceleration of learning for our students. Um, so that, that recovery piece is one to, that I'll name. As was mentioned earlier, you know, the, the staff shortages and recruitment and, and the, the shortages of teachers, the shortages of staff, um, I know we mentioned, we talked about, we talked about, um, uh, teachers, you know, but, but staff, you know, the parent professionals, um, bus drivers, we, we've had significant challenges here around that too. I'll name, I did let my CDL lapse when I moved to Colorado, but I have my CDL, and I'm not afraid of jumping on a bus and, and doing what we need to do for our kids as well. But addressing, addressing those shortages in staffing, and really thinking creatively out of the box, as well as how do we attract, um, the challenges around not only funding, I know that, that there's, there's, there's help with, with funding that we have, but really being able to lean in with, um, how do we compensate, uh, you know, some of our professional, our support professionals, and a lot of these pieces around that. Um, and addressing the, the, not only the student, but the adult wellness is going to be an ongoing issue. You know, our students and families and teachers have experienced trauma through this pandemic, and, um, everyone has been affected by it. Um, and we've all had law, we've experienced loss and trauma around that, to really be able to, to do that in the pandemic. In Florida, I would mention, you know, adjusting to whatever the new accountability system is, I know there's legislation around progressive monitoring measures, and what is the just right around that? So, um, those pieces are going to be there, and, and critical to any district, you know, looking at capital funding around, you know, school facilities and infrastructure. I mean, kudos to Lee County for the incredible work around, you know, doors, roofs, infrastructure, new school buildings, incredible work, but that will be ongoing and critical as, as we continue to move forward.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mrs. Giavennelli.
What is it about the position that makes you want to make a change at this time in your professional career? Please be specific.
That's like, great question, my wife asked me. No, I'm joking, sir. Um, so I, as I shared, as I shared in my application, um, my aspiration to, to lead a high performing school district, to, to lead a, not only a high performing, but a nationally recognized school district that is committed to closing the achievement or the opportunity gap for all students. And I, I just want to name, um, I'm not desperately seeking a position. Um, I currently love my role in Denver Public Schools as deputy superintendent, and there's incredible work that's happening here. And Florida's home. You know, I lived in Florida, I'm a, I'm a, before I lived, before I left for Florida, I always don't say I'm a New York City kid, I lived in Florida, and now in Colorado, I'm, I'm a Florida kid that, you know, really grew up in Florida. So Florida's been home for 30 plus years. Um, I live in South Florida, I attended college in, in, that is, at Southeastern University in Central Florida. So the change really is around not only my career aspiration, but it's got to be the right fit, not only, you know, this is a two-way relationship. I want to make sure, as much as I've learned about leading, growing to really admire and understand it, it's about being the right fit for you as the board if, if I be the selection as superintendent, as well as the community. I want to be, you know, this is a marriage that takes two to really, uh, truly understand that. But I understand, I understand the Florida public school system. You know, I served the majority of my career, absence of these last three years. Um, I understand the, the passion and the complexities of our, the love and sunshine state. You know, the school district of Lee County is the only school district that I actually currently apply for, um, and for a couple of different reasons, right? There's got to be a connection and... There's got to be a connection and I've had a front row seat across, due east across Alligator Alley, you know, for the last 20-plus years to admire the incredible work here in Lee County. I also collaborated with staff when I worked in Broward. I had an opportunity to visit the International Center at Dunbar High School and was able to bring that back to Broward. I visited Lehigh, Lehigh High School around the Avid, that was an Avid demonstration school. I also introduced Latinos and Nations, a program that I brought to the entire state of Florida through a partnership with the Latinos and Nations organization. But I introduced that, I know it's a highly, it's a very successful program that really supports our schools and I believe it's in Dunbar High School as well. And so the attraction to right now and why Lee, I believe the school district of Lee County is poised and positioned to do even greater work for our students. You know, a student body that's 40% Hispanic, a population that I identify with, and I'm excited about the potential opportunity if you see fit in joining this team and leading Lee schools.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. We are at the end of the interview and questions, so at this time...
That's it?
Well, hold on. We can go on for another hour, however, we have to make sure that it's consistent with everyone else. So at this point though, we are bringing it, letting you, or allowing you to ask questions of us and also have your closing remarks. And I will turn this back over to Ms. Fisher, who is our vice chair.
So then, Mr. Ramirez, at the end of this question and answer session, what questions might you have for the board?
This is where I flip the script now, I thought I asked you questions, right? No, I like that. No, no, I actually, I would, I would ask, I would ask one, I have one question that I would actually ask, if I may, if time allows, for each board member to ask. If you selected me as your superintendent, what area would you hope that I would prioritize or that I would look to be addressed first?
Okay. So board members, what area would you hope that Mr. Ramirez would address first if he were selected? Ms. Gittens?
And she's pointing at me too. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity.
Your son is in Colorado, I didn't even thought of you because he's in Denver, we have a little connection.
I know, we got that in common. The main thing I would say is prioritizing resources. And that kind of encompasses so many things because resources for academic achievement, resources for the digital divide, resources for buildings. If you, you don't need to ask me that question if you watch any of the meetings, you kind of know where I'm going with that. But I, I just feel that that should be a priority, not on the five-year plan or the 10-year plan, but the very near future, we need to look at how we're using resources like the ESAR funds and the, you know, the tax dollars. Those are things that potentially can go away. So those are things that I feel we need to really focus on, so.
Ms. Vaughn?
Hi. I would say organizational efficiencies. We are, it seems like our organizational charts have been, have been changing and we've debated which department should be where and I, I think the organizational plan chart needs a bit of revision perhaps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, so building on what Ms. Vaughn has said, I think one of the significant issues for us is building a high-quality leadership team in the district across the board. We have some exceptional talent in this district, we're growing good talent, but we do have some holes and we need to fill those holes with people who are able to add value to what we're doing here. And then the second thing that is of a personal passion of mine is I want to see relationships with the business community in developing opportunities for children post-graduation. I do believe that every child should have a place to go and I believe it's our responsibility to make sure that they have the certification skills, whatever, are necessary to move into our local workplace. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Giavanelle?
So, Mrs. Morgan took a little bit of mine, but I want to take it just a little bit deeper regarding relationships, starting with the board, building upon that with the community and our local leaders and delegation and our parents and students. I just, we need to bring everyone together and so I, I think that was something you said, everyone has a seat at the table earlier and, and just building upon those relationships, starting with our board personally. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I would say all of that with students as our focus.
Yeah.
That was what I was going to say, students. What do you want to prioritize? Students.
Students, yes. So would you like to make a closing statement, Mr. Ramirez?
Sure, I will. So, so thank you for that, board members. And I'd like to just thank you for the opportunity again to, to share with you this morning. I'm truly honored to just, just have the opportunity to just share some of who I am and what I believe. And to go back to what I shared at the beginning, you know, I'm a values-based leader and relationships, relationships matter, my faith, not only, not only my faith personally, but also my faith in people and family, you know. This is a, you know, it's selective, this is a package deal, right? So I bring, I bring with me an incredible wife and I bring two amazing little girls. I have a, I have a little girl who will begin kindergarten hopefully in Lee County and I bring with you a three-month-old. So, so part of my hope is that, you know, maybe this relationship could increase my babysitter by seven possibly, because I have an amazing little three-year, three-month-old little girl. So, but really, but I would say so, and people matter. I believe every person, I believe every person wants to feel loved, valued, seen and heard. And how we do that, you know, it's about how do we work through our differences, particularly in this day and age where there's so much divide? How do we bring folks together for the common purpose, keeping the focus on our students? I understand the importance and the power of education to change lives. It changed this kid, it changed, it changed my life and I know it's changed so many thousands of students that have gone through our Lee schools. I'm day one, ready for leadership and ready to hit the ground running. You know, my grounding principle around every child deserves opportunities to have a high-quality education, that's what I believe at the core is every, every single kid walking in, I don't care what their circumstances are, we might not control what they walk into our schools with, but we control what we do when they're in our schools. And ensuring that it's a positive, it's highly engaging and that every single student in Lee, in our school district is connected to an adult that cares for them. You know, I share with you, I would lead, lead with the four L's, love, listen, learn and lead. And really, really understand that. And the last thing I would tell you is that I bring my lunchbox to work every day. And what that means is, you know, a couple of, a number of years ago as a school leader, I challenged my staff over the summer, I gave them five minutes to bring a lunchbox. They had some of those final lunchboxes and bring it in. And that year, according to school year, lunchbox stories, because we knew it was going to be a hard year. And really I grounded our team in the lunchbox being a place where you capture notes, letters from kids, teachers, parents, that just kind of lifted you up and just did, you know. So it became this theme of lunchbox stories and every faculty meeting was around. And I have, and to this day, that was, that was about 15 years ago and I still have teachers that reach out and say through social media, hey, here's a lunchbox story and they'll share a letter with me around that. And I bring that with me. And in my office, if given the opportunity, we'll sit two lunchboxes. They are Yankee lunchboxes, I am a Yankee fan, so I just want to name that. If that's a concern, we could talk about that. I am a New York City kid, so. But in those lunchboxes, it's letters from when I, my first year of teaching, from letters kids have given me, from letters parents have given me, from pictures. And really it's about just, and that's why I'm grounded in my life. And when I'm having that tough day, I shut my door, open the lunchbox and I start reading. I've never gotten to the bottom, maybe two or three letters in where I'm just refocused and right, and really grounded in that. And so I share with you, I will bring my lunchbox to work every day. And so I thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to the potential of what this opportunity may be, bringing meaningful, authentic relationships, starting with you on Board of Education, our school, our school board, that are grounded in trust, transparency, accountability and doing it together with you and the school district of Lee County community, hopefully as your next superintendent of schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate you taking the time to interview with us and you will be hearing from us shortly. Thank you again and have a good day.
Thank you so much. I apologize for some of the audios, the earplug, that actually definitely works, I apologize for that, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you for the opportunity. I won't say stay warm, because I know it's warm there, but whoa, sleep in here. Have a great day. Have a great day. Thank you.
You also. Okay. So, okay. So now, we have a moment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, we have two. All right. Mr. Free Bruno, do you want to address public comment?
I think do it the same way you did it yesterday, Ms. Fisher.
Okay.
So we'll call those two individuals up. I think we'll call Tara Jenner and Karen G. Tara Jenner and Karen G, please go to the microphone in the back.
It's three minutes, is that correct, Ms. Free Bruno?
Yes, it's three minutes and I have the timer going.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's three minutes and she has the timer going.
Yeah, but can I see it? Please?
Ms. Roman, can you put that up on the screen, please? And thank you. I'm so sorry, Ms. Fisher, I did not mean to...
Nope, that's okay.
Ms. Jenner, you can begin. I have the three minutes and then you'll...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can I say something?
Is my microphone on?
Yes, it's on.
Oh. Ms. Jenner, you can begin and then I can give you a one-minute warning if you want. I do have the timer ready to go and you'll hear a sound once you've, your three minutes have elapsed.
I'm reluctant to say anything about the candidates for concern that the board members may actually note the things that I'm saying and hold them against that particular candidate. Nonetheless, I'm hopeful that regardless of that potential concern, that my comments will be viewed in an unbiased consideration with respect to the candidates. I sat through the first interview yesterday as well as the three today. I had to leave and did not get to hear Christopher Bernier's comments yesterday, however, I did do research on him myself. And I will start by just saying that Ray and Associates specifically said on January 4th, 4th, that they didn't find anything disqualifying as far as issues for any of the candidates. And what they consider disqualifying, what I might consider disqualifying are not necessarily in concert with one another. So I'll just throw that out there for what it's worth. I do note that Mr. Gall and Mr. Ramirez seem to be reading their intros and they were almost identical to other interviews that I've heard them do that are available on YouTube. And also, some of the comments that they were making, it looked as though that they were reading off of a script that they already did. And I'm not suggesting they had advance notice of the questions. It may be that they were extremely prepared and know what kind of questions generally come up, but I would encourage you to go back and check those videos out and see if you see what I saw. Mr. Ramirez is one who does concern me a little bit because of the fact that his response to school closures and reopening is very disparate to the way things were handled here in Florida, specifically here in Lee County. And Mr. Gall does seem to have done a fair bit of homework in the area of specifics here in Lee County and I commend him for coming to the area to check things out. It is, however, a whole lot easier to do that when you're currently unemployed and you have worked for, so I'm not going to take that away from him because I was also active duty, air force.
You have one minute.
I am concerned when people focus on specific ethnic groups versus individual students, regardless of the need. I think we need to look at individual students for purposes of outcome and what their requirements and needs are in order to close gaps. I did find Mr. Malawine's Let the Bucks Stop Here approach to leadership very refreshing. And I will say that many times, I would say that four of the candidates, or at least the three that I heard, sounded basically like cookie cutters of what we've had over the years. And the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. And I just ask you to consider, how's that been working for us when you do your review? In general, I think the whole system was flawed to start with, but these are the five you've picked.
Thank you. I'll, I didn't listen to the five candidates' interviews, so I'll just comment on some things I heard in this interview that impressed me. One was, he said he was a data-driven leader. And as a coach, which is a great quality for a leader, to mention that he's data-driven, I thought that was a great comment and a great balance. I love that he said he's a learner. God help us if we've got somebody leading an educational institution, they need to be a learner. Education is usually the solution to most things. I liked when he said, "I bring my lunchbox to work every day" and what it meant to him. He was describing how he brings his heart to what he does to serve people. So those are three things that I like. These are my comments. If I was to ask a question, I would have asked something like this, these are just my thoughts. If, is the phrase best practice policies in your contract? If not, would you negotiate for it? And the reason is, we live in a world of misinformation, disinformation and also good information. So it's been hard for everybody. I think everybody agrees that we have lies and truth out there or misinformation and information. What we seem to disagree on is how to tell the difference. So, you know, yeah, I wasn't going to name a board member, but I almost did. But to come to get, to find where we agree and start from there is always a great idea. So best practice policies are rooted in data, they're rooted in expert opinion, they're rooted in peer review and best practice policies are part of Florida government. If you go to the Florida Department of Education, their pages are full of best practice policies. I would argue that needs to be held a higher standard or be our go-to unless there's something better.
You have one minute, ma'am.
So that would be my first question. My second question would be working on stronger anti-bullying policies for adults. And the reason I bring that up is because the school district has made national news for controversy, even our violent school board meetings. We've made MSNBC, we've made Newsweek, we've made the National Review and we've made more than one international satire website. So board members have been called tyrants, board members have been called demonic entities and board members have been called sex traffickers. All of this is completely unacceptable and not even near the standards that we hold our children to because of the law passed in 2011 because of Jeffrey Johnston, who was a Cape Coral student. So my thought would be, how would you work to resolve those issues and maybe you do bring people together outside of a board meeting? Thank you. Thank you.
Concludes public comments, Ms. Fisher.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, ladies, and now board members' comments. I will say that the videos of the interviews will be processed and posted sometime later this evening. Okay, Ms. Morgan.
Well, I would ask then, that in addition to the letter that's gone out to the people who are participating on the search, that somebody tells them when the video goes up, if it's not going to be till this evening. So, that would be my only comment.
They will be getting notification that it's up.
Okay.
Okay, all right, that's my only question, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I put Ms. Jordan on the spot. I know you were working on a timeline during our lunch break. Were you able to make any headway on it? Because I know you have to fit in different people's own calendars and all of that. Have we come up with any definitive dates that work?
Well, after this meeting, we are definitely going to meet to try to solidify everything, and then everything will come out to you later today. We're going to try to get everything done today, so everybody knows where we're going forward. Because we want to make sure that we're doing things sooner than later. So we are planning on meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
So, in response to that, I would say that I think it's obligatory that unless we have something critical on our calendar, that we do everything we can to make a tighter timeline for this search, so.
Thank you. And then also, I have had our administrative assistants have checked calendars, so they're already, already have been on that, where there's no conflicts.
Well, unfortunately, there are conflicts online. I had an event scheduled, I saw a hold on Monday, the 31st, and I had an event scheduled here in the, and you have it from 7:00 a.m. or something? Can we look at that? I had a group actually that was going to use the boardroom that day. And I don't know how that wasn't looked at.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would, would you, yes, and please take that into consideration. That's been placed for a month, and there is a group that is coming in. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
It's a private group that's coming in? I, well, I guess I should be asking.
It's on my calendar. It's a group of Girl Scouts from the community, and they were, it's been on the calendar for a while. And they have scheduled it. It's been in the works for the last couple of months. I would hate to disappoint them.
Right. They're looking at all, they're looking at everything.
Yeah, and I understand, and I, and just keep in mind too, that I am having difficulty with my scheduling. What's on my phone, what's on here, what's everywhere is all different. So please contact me before you, because I've got, I missed several things today because it was over.
And they are actually, I know they've had conversations. We're trying to make sure that they are speaking to everyone, so that way, because of the situation with some phones are not matching up with calendars, I know that the ladies are actually speaking to them one-on-one. So they just haven't gotten to you yet. It, we just, this just all happened.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn, do you have anything else?
Actually, I'm just now pulling up my calendar just to see, you know, what's on hold and what, because there have been, it's difficult for Ms. Roman and, I'm losing my mind. Thomas, Ms. Latoya, I was going to say. It's difficult for them, because we've had so many different changes. And sometimes, on my calendar, it's like, here's one thing in gray, and then in the middle of it, it's something that's still there, and then this one's been canceled. So I understand the difficulty of keeping the calendars up to date, and it's easy to miss something, so.
I think though, when it's gray, it's because it has been, you have to actually go in there and remove it. It has been canceled, so unless you remove it, it will remain gray. Am I correct in that, or am I misspeaking? But normally on the calendar, when you see a calendar and it's in gray, that has normally been canceled, so until you say, "remove from calendar," it stays there. And then if it's solid, and I'm speaking like I'm a tech person, which I am not, but it's clear if it's, if it has been accepted. But then also remember, there's two calendars. There's your personal calendar, and then there is the calendar. So a lot of times, and that's in different colors. So the ladies are normally looking at everybody's calendars, but because of, there have been some situations where it's not crossing over, they have been making sure that they are reaching out and having conversations with board members to clarify that.
Yeah, but even so, I'm finding, like, there's two columns and one, I mean.
Because two people are sending you the same invitation, correct? Thank you.
Well, that's what I'm looking for right now.
Mrs. Gittens?
And I'm, I don't know, I feel like we're far enough along in the process that we should be able to have at least a tentative schedule, you know, for the conclusion of this, of this whole matter. I mean, we're down, we did, we're down to five, we'll be down to three next week. I just feel like you should be able to get with Ray and Associates and come up with some tentative calendar, because just like the applicants were asking.
We are, that's what we're doing after this.
And the one, the schedule, that yellow one and all of that, was up on the website, and I don't know why it was taken down, but I had asked to have it updated. And I just think we need to kind of solidify some dates at this point, so we can put it out on the website.
I don't think that's, I don't think you're on, Mr. Dotick. Is it? Okay.
Mentioned to you all, when I briefed you last week, was the 9th and 10th of February. But I'm hearing now there's more urgency, which I completely understand. So that's why we're going to get together after you adjourn this meeting to try to come up with some more dates that are sooner.
My concern about sooner dates, I thought we were supposed to be having, like, community forums and workshops and, I mean, things that the community could get involved in, besides just the committee that was just done. That was in the original plan, and.
That's before we were, the district was involved. I don't know about that. What I know about is, from the point we got involved, we worked with Ray and Associates to have the five candidates today, have the search committee that you all appointed individuals to, who are receiving the link tonight, who will be providing feedback to Ray and Associates, and that information will be reviewed with you on Monday.
The only problem with that is, the, in my understanding, the committees and the people that we chose were to be, like, representative of the community, not just individuals. So if they get the information today and have to get it back to us tomorrow, they don't have an opportunity, like the school-based leaders or whatever, to talk to people, to get input. And so we are narrowing our sphere of information to, like, five people, as opposed to giving them time to talk with people in their groups and get back to us. I understand wanting to move ahead and, you know, and getting someone before they go somewhere else, but I think we have to do this right. We said in the beginning, there would be town halls, there would be connections with the community. And I don't believe that these five people that we each chose is taking that away from the process. I mean, maybe someone else has decided that, but I don't think so.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm just going to say that it's, and I understand the difficulties on this, but I'm feeling that there's a huge disconnect among the board, like, the chair, the board as a whole, HR, Ray and Associates. And I'm putting Ray and Associates way up there, because they are our search team. And I feel like some of the disconnect stems from that company. And I'll be honest, I have not been a happy camper on their timeliness on this. And what happens then, it, then it filters down. It reflects poorly on our board chair, it reflects poorly on our HR. We sit up here and we seem like doofuses for not being able to answer somebody's question about, "Well, when are we going to hear from you?" Or when, I mean, it's filtered down and made all of us look less than brilliant. In other words, kind of stupid. Sorry, it's the truth.
And I have, Ms. Vaughn, I have to agree with you. So that's why we are going to meet with them today and get with Ray and Associates to say, "This is what you need to tell." And that's why they are supposed to be sending everything out to every single board member to make sure that everybody is included. So, and I had a brief conversation with him right before we came in here to let him know that we will be reaching out afterwards, because this has to be done. So they, I.
So virtual, like that, right?
Okay, Ms. Jordan, do you have anything more? Okay, Ms. Patrica?
Yes, so one of the things that I've done to increase community involvement in this process is to put the superintendent's search webpage. Thank you, Ms. Gittens, by the way, for doing such a good job of keeping that updated. I put it on the overhead when I give speeches in the community, and I walk people through how to provide feedback. I did it at Rotary yesterday, I did it with EDAC via Zoom. I will do it tonight with Student Advisory Committee. I will do it.
Ms. Patrica, could you, you say EDAC, and she thinks it's EDAC.
Oh, Executive District Advisory Council.
Thank you.
And I, I do it, I will do it with the District Advisory Council as well. I wasn't aware that I was appointing five people to get community feedback. That's my job, I represent my community, and I chose five people in my community who thought, who I thought represented the, you know, various stakeholder groups in my community. But I'm the one that represents District 3, not the five people that I chose. So I was, that wasn't my understanding of why I was choosing those five people. I think it's on me to get community feedback, and I've all but begged people to please get onto the website. And I have to tell you that I have been super impressed with the level of feedback that we've gotten from the community. They come in in the form of these emails, you all see them, notification@lee schools for the super. I mean, it's a lot of emails, and it's good feedback. It's not the typical, "We're mad at you and we hate you" kind of feedback. It's really, people have really read these resumes, and I've urged people to please not just read the resumes, but also watch the interviews, because the person on paper and the person in the interviewer are going to be completely different. So I get the frustrations with the timelines, but I also get that we are seven people with seven different schedules, and we have to approve these three finalists before we can interview them. So there's some uncertainty on behalf of Ray and Associates as well. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Javonelli?
So yes, thank you, I actually ditto several of what my board members have said. But also, we've got to look at the calendar, our calendar, we're going to be, I know we're, I think we had to be careful in saying rushing and giving that impression. We still need to hear from the people that are involved to have them, give them time to watch these hour-and-a-half videos and interviewing. That's going to take, that, I mean, I don't, that's a lot of time. We can't, we couldn't even do it in one day, we've had to do it in two days. So we have to know that the people, and I mean, the public, everyone, if they want to see it, give them, allow that time to do that. So that's really important. One of the things that I was wanting to bring up is that we're going to be in Tallahassee next, like, in a week or so, so I mean, we can't, our calendar is already booked, so the expectation, I think, is a bit much to be putting on our staff. And as well as HR, I think that they've done a great job getting involved, because I think it's put us this far. Unfortunately, the timeline has, you know, we haven't received the information initially, effectively, I feel, from Ray and Associates, that, you know, they're the ones that said they would have two days to review the applications when, in fact, that wasn't not the case. So we've had to rush it, they've made us rush some of the things, and I really didn't appreciate that. And then there's been other issues, as we all know. So, but it is what it is, we're in it at this point. I think we just need to let the process happen, but we need to do it, you know, allow for the time to happen. I mean, I just think that for it to be effective, we have to give the time to the community to have that feedback. I want to, I want to hear the feedback, and I enjoy reading all the notifications. I think it's important, but, and I'm good, I'm encouraging others, not even in that small group that I picked, to go and watch the, all the interviews, because I think they're important. I myself probably will go back, because when you're up here, it's different. You hear things different than when you watch it. So I recommend that as well. So, and that's all I have, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs. Gittens, do you have something?
Well, I kind of falter back and forth, but I just think we need to follow up with Ray and Associates on the initial plan, which was to do community outreach. The community, and I agree with Ms. Patrica, that there have been a lot of responses that came in. But think about how many are going to come in after tonight, when the finalists go up there and people have an opportunity to look at them. We got all of that feedback without them even knowing, except on paper, that these were the people. Now they've had an opportunity, they will have an opportunity to see and hear them and send in information. I just, it's such an important decision, I don't want us to rush it too much just to get it within a certain timeframe.
And Mrs. Javonelli?
I'm sorry, and will the interview links be on the website for people to go there and click the, click on, you know?
That's what they're putting up, as we speak, that's what they're doing.
Great.
Is pulling all that together, and that will be up live, now that all five have been done.
Right, great, that's.
Are you putting it on the website?
Yeah, that was my question.
Because that's what I'm hoping that is going to happen, as opposed to just putting it on YouTube.
Ms. Stillwell? Can you, will it be, will it be, it'll be on both? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, then, my comments are, thank you to Ms. Patrica for welcoming and talking with Student Advisory this evening. And I am anxious to hear what happens with Mrs. Jordan and HR's meeting with Ray and Associates this afternoon. And then we'll have more information to go on. Attorney Bruno?
I have none, thank you.
Nothing, okay. So seeing no other business and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned.